Let's get started. Welcome, everyone, to the January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three episode of the. And with that, could I have a motion to establish the agenda as public?
So moves.
And a second.
Seconded.
All in favor? Again, okay, with that, we've got our agenda and we'll move on to superintendent's report.
I am going to, we have plenty of reports coming, so no reports, I have a couple announcements later, but no major reports.
And then recognition.
Yes, unfortunately, Chantel Johnson, our head coach of our girls swim and dive team is ill, and so we're going to postpone the swim and dive until the next meeting for their recognition as state champions. With that, I do, because our next meeting kind of falls at the tail end, February sixth through the tenth is National School Counseling Week, and it's an important opportunity for us just to think about the impact that our counselors have on our students, both the academic counselors at our middle school and our high school, but also our youth and family services partners, and so we'll be sending them out certificates and some things and certainly thanking them for all their efforts, but that's coming up here early February. And then tomorrow is International Holocaust Remembrance Day. We also have another Remembrance Day that comes up in April, that is more a national recognition that corresponds with some other recognition, so we'll be sending out just a small tweet in social media on that tomorrow. And then May is Jewish Heritage Month, and so we'll be joining our Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month and that in celebration of May.
Great, thank you very much. There is no public input today, so we will skip it as always. My call for public input or email to the board is most appreciated, and the board reads it all, so please feel free to do either. And let's move on to political governance monitoring. Do we want to move up in coaches or?
Sure.
If we want to.
You want to move up coaches or move to fundamental two and then coaches? Can we push fourteen forty or forty forty down in the agenda? Or do you want to go with coaches first?
Uh, coaches first, since everyone's here. Yeah, we should, we should honor them first.
So coming up to our, to join us today are our elementary coaching cadre, you have a chance to hear from. And meet with our middle school and high school group, and so we're going to bring in our elementary team. I believe we have one person who's joining us.
I don't know that she'll be able to join. She's, she's in class.
Fair enough, doing some important learning. That's probably a good thing.
If she's on, Andrew, you can promote her, but I don't think she is.
Um, so it's a religion and honor and having spent time in the elementary world in our district, certainly before coming to the district office. Um, you know, this is a team that I've worked shoulder to shoulder with at Lakewood, two of them in particular, but all four of them worked with on a number of projects over the years. So I'll turn it over to Nova Director Williams to introduce the team and give us our presentation on our elementary.
Let me get it started and share my screen real quick and then. Um, we are going to do introductions as a part of our presentation. And you'll see those post-disabled participants sharing. Okay, so we'll do introductions as a part of our sharing tonight, but I'll run. You this evening as a continuation from last week, but this time we wanted to have the elementary coaches in front of you so that they could explain a little bit of their work. As a reminder, we have five coaches at the elementary level. We have four site-based coaches, and then we have one district-based coach in Chris. So our intent tonight is really to add on to last week's presentation, so we'll give you a look at what our elementary coaches are doing, and then we'll share that kind of surrounding their roles. And connected to that, we'll talk a little bit about the tentacles of their work beyond just the coaching work that they're doing. And we'll give you a little bit of information about how coaches are accessed, what kind of work they do in our elementary schools, which might look a little different presently, certainly than our middle school and high school. Alright, so we'll do introductions first. So I'm Nova. I oversee our coaches as a team and work closely with them. And I'll let them introduce themselves. Joby, do you want to introduce yourself first?
Sure, I'm Joby. I am.
Lisa Bean Scott, I'm the instructional coach at Lakewood Elementary School. I'll go next.
I'm Heidi Clark, and I'm the instructional coach at Northwood.
And I'm Chris Coffin Ray, that one all the way over to the right. I mean, I'm the inclusion coach for all of them.
And then Angela Mitchell is our site-based coach at West Mercer, and she is not here with us this evening, so we'll be representing her content this evening. So we included here just some fun pictures because they are, you know, humans outside of their role. And I thoroughly enjoy working with all of them as human elements of our system. They're a great team to work alongside. And then I wanted them to add their teaching experience because I think it's important for us to see the breadth of experience that we have in that number of years for our staff members as coaches having access to those staff members. So let's talk about access. So we want to think about what percentage of teachers access coaches in each of these buildings in any way, shape, or form. So I asked them to go through the staff list. I did not look at that information because part of this work is that the work that they engage in with teachers is not my purview. So I don't see what they do with a teacher. I see the product of what they do with teachers. So I asked them to look at their list of teachers in their staff building, in their buildings as a staff, and identify what percentage this year they've worked with in some capacity. So we're going to show you those numbers so that you can see them. These are the numbers that we have in the first four-ish months of school as we've gone through. So Island Park, Joby's first year as a coach. Um, Joby has the ninety-six, ninety-five point six percent. It's very precise. Northwood is hidey down here at ninety-six percent, and Lakewood at West Mercer, we have a hundred percent. So pretty high numbers in terms of how they're accessing coaches for support in any variety of ways. And we'll talk a little bit about what that looks like because there's a lot, I think, in terms of what ways people might access coaches to help seek that support. So that's our support menu. So I'll show you this. It may be hard to see all of these things, but we're going to speak to some of them. So there are lots of ways in which someone accesses a coach. I think last week or two weeks ago, I guess now, you heard more about sort of the coaching cycle and what that looks like as they support coaches or go through a coaching cycle to support a teacher. But beyond that, there are lots of ways that coaches are accessed. Before I forget it, I can even say it today in thinking about our letters training, is that at the tail end of that, one of the things people are given is the idea that they can go back to their coach to get some additional job embedded professional learning around that. So we do, we'll touch on that in a bit here. Um, one of the things that I think in general is data, so I'll speak to that piece, and then each of our coaches will run through a piece of it as well. So when we think about data review, there's certainly a lot of data that we have access to in our school systems. But if we don't have the knowledge of how to use it, then it's useless. So our coaches have been supporting that process and identifying what does this mean, and then now what do I do instructionally with it, which is really where their power is. I can tell them all the things about what it means that I want to, but I can't be in their classrooms every day to help support them with that instructional piece. So that is where the power comes in each of these folks so that they can help support that. So I'll let them run through their bits about the menu and what part of it. We're not going to cover all of them, but each of them will cover one element from the menu here. You first. Sure. So one thing that I'll briefly cover from the menu, and this is just, again, a small sampling that we provide teachers at the beginning of the year. All of our coaching menus look slightly different, but this was one that was shared with the West Mercer staff. One of the things that we offer our teachers is to go on learning walks, and a learning walk is an opportunity for a teacher to go and see their colleagues within their building or sometimes within other buildings and observe them. And last year, I had a chance of supporting several different teachers and doing learning walks around Northwood. Um, teaching can feel really isolated, and especially coming out of COVID, when teachers were in their homes in front of computers. Some teachers might have done their student teaching remote and not had a chance to even engage in their student teaching with students face-to-face. So a learning walk has been a great tool for us to utilize across buildings. The way that we kind of structured it is the teacher will identify an area or a goal that they would like to work on, and then we use that as a lens as we go into different classrooms, and as a coach, we are able to be a reflective partner. Once we step outside of that classroom, we can discuss things that they saw, moves that the teacher made, they can reflect on some noticings or wonderings that they have, and it's an opportunity for us to kind of sharpen our focus when they go back into their own classroom. It's also a chance for us to celebrate all the great things that we see, these teachers and these practices, you know, growing in our buildings, and a chance, again, to build those connections. So if it's a newer teacher, you know, who's maybe a primary teacher, getting a chance to push up and see a more experienced or an intermediate teacher, we're creating connections and giving teachers a chance to learn from one another and celebrate, you know, all that we see that is going so well in our buildings.
My turn. Yes, so I'm the inclusion coach, which means my job is just a little bit different. And it really does die into the UDL, which is the Universal Design for Learning. And that, for me, has meant that one of my primary jobs over the last year and a half has been to provide and make sure that teachers have the resources to actually complete that universal design for learning. So one of the things that has happened is there's now a website that they can go to and access all the resources that support, including what is a filmed learning walk. There are examples, exemplars, there's printed resources, so they can do a needs asset of their class. And my function is to come into a classroom if a teacher is having trouble figuring out, how do I reach down and up? And for me, the up part is really important because we can't forget those kids who need that extra challenge. So oftentimes, I come into a class and I might run a small group for a teacher for a while so that they can see what happens in an extended group. I might run another group so that they can try out that extended piece. I also provide them the resources when they need it. So for instance, I'm working with the, my, my initial was, was three through five. But I've ended up going into the high school and I'm going now down into second grade and first grade because we just used iReady to identify those kids who need extension in second grade. So my mandate at this point is to make sure those kids do not miss that extension. And a big part of that is, is me helping the teacher understand that they can do all that and also providing the resources to get it there. So there's several of those different kinds of resources. If you want me, there's a lot of resources I can talk about. It's been a busy couple of years, but they're on the end here in the, in the last slide. Yeah, just a little.
So one of the things Chris referenced that I just want to make sure we're clear on too is we have some teachers that are piloting the use of iReady assessment at the primary level, K one and two. Obviously, they'll use it when we roll out for the next series for the adoption, but we had some teachers who were really ready and wanted to look at that and map data for their kids because as a criteria and reference assessment, it provides something different than the norm-referenced assessment that Ainsweb is. So our teachers in K one and two, a grouping of them chose to come to an optional training that principals hosted so that they could get that information and start using it. And we'll also do a pilot of some of the literacy items to see if that's something we're interested in. Um, one of the instructional coaching options that you could find at any one of our schools is a classroom visit. So you can invite an instructional coach into your classroom where they can do some observations for you, whatever you'd like us to observe. It could be time on task for a specific student. It could be data collection around transition time, whatever it is a teacher might be looking to see current realities. And so we are that extra eyes in your classroom. It's by invitation only, but we get invited all the time as you're working through whatever issue you're trying to develop or get better at in your classroom, whatever that strategy might be. And another thing that I really find that coaches are a space where it is a safe space for listening and support. As one of our values is a safe and comforting community. The teachers need that space as well, and I believe that coaches provide that opportunity, a non-valued space where you can come and talk about whatever you need to talk about work-related and we're there for you and to support in any way that you need. And having it be one of our values, I do believe that instructional coaches at the elementary school level, our doors are open, and that's why you see those percentages are so high at all of our schools. We all have incredible relationships with our staff, and it really is a place where you can get the support that you need without feeling judged. And I think that in any work environment, it's important to have that space.
Well, when a teacher decides that they want to have somebody come in and model some lessons, there are a couple of problems that we use when we decide or they decide how they're going to invite you, and one of them might be because they want some professional growth in a specific area. And it could also be based on the curriculum, curriculum implementation, and we have two of those going on right now, and they want some support to be able to manage that better. Or it could be model some classroom management or transition behaviors and things like that, and so that's no problem. Another tier that we use is our student support team, and we are all in charge of the student support team at each of our sites. And when we looked at the data of the number of referrals we see just in the first few months of school, it was noteworthy to us, the number of students that are being referred simply for behavioral, social, emotional, and executive functioning types of issues. And so I can give you the sample of the data that we collected at West Mercer, forty-one percent of them have been related to that. Northwood has seventy-three percent of the referral. Lakewood came in with sixty-five percent, and now in Park with eighty percent. And so another way we can model some lessons or we look at the data and want to tell us, and what do students, so it's not just what staffing, but what can students benefit from? And so the example at our school for how this has been addressed is I had the opportunity to put together eight social-emotional learning lessons and ten executive functioning lessons, and the executive functioning are for kindergarten through second, third through fifth, third, socially-emotional. And offered them to the staff. They could sign up for as few as many as they wanted. Fifteen of the seventeen classroom teachers signed up for a total of one hundred eighteen lessons in January and February. So we're kind of in the middle of that right now. So it's actually modeling the strategies for students to actually how to use them and benefit them. We've heard the board talk quite a little about about social, emotional, executive functioning, that that's really a great need as we come out with the pandemic or we hope to be coming out of it. And so that's an opportunity to help all kids, so touching every child in the school. But it also provides an opportunity for the teaching staff to either co-teach with you, and some have elected to do that, and others have used, used the time to simply watch you teach and interact with the same group of students that they have. And that's beneficial because the responsibility is different. It's on somebody else, and they can actually watch how kids are interacting, socializing, and actually managing the skills and strategies that they're being taught. And let's see, that's it. I think that's where we are.
Can I, yeah, quick question on that? Do you, do you or the classroom teacher communicate with the parents, especially when it's executive functioning, things that they could be supporting at home?
Sure, that's a great question. Any classroom teachers have the decision-making in that role. They can share it out, and some have. There is a classroom that has asked, if I would create material or share the material with their parents or specific parents of students that have been targeted to receive services, and we call our PALS program students who have high dysregulation frequency and need some support, and they might be working one-on-one with somebody. And so I have direct contact with some parents that teachers have asked if I would do that, but it really is up to the classroom teacher or at their disposal, and whatever it is that we can do to help them meet the needs of those kids. If it includes communicating with parents, we're happy to direct emails or to actually send their curriculum beyond. So it's very depending on what the teacher.
Thank you.
Sure.
Are the, you know, the instructions you give to teachers to be able to detect and help students with their executive functioning? Is that, how big is that lesson? And is it recorded? Could it be viewed offline? How do you guys treat that?
Sure. So how it's handled at our school is I'm the one that comes in and teaches the lessons. And so they consist of typically a short video that gives kind of an overview or warm them up on, hey, this is what it's going to look like, and this is the skill that we're talking about or the executive functioning area. And then there's typically a game, and we're an activity of some kind, so they actually have to practice the skills that we're telling them. So for example, today, there was metacognition was one of the focuses in first grade, and so we practiced metacognition games where they had to remember some things that they're going to need to use immediately because that's what metacognition is. So they aren't recorded. It's just replicated in every classroom with every teacher who signed up, and they're all at different times because people selected them. Maybe so, you know, it's typically four to eight lessons a day in different classrooms based on what the teachers have sent out for. Does that answer the question? Yeah, I have three questions. So one's related to the last one, the David asshole. So when it comes to tracking social, emotional, and executive functioning skills, we track how many of those students were in separate classes that are now are in heterogeneous classes. The second question is, it was mentioned for iReady. Is there a designated point person when it comes to sort of deciphering functionality and capabilities when it comes to these platforms? Or is that a technology instructional coach? And then the third is in the intro slide, it showed the number of teaching years experienced, a number of experiences as an instructional coach. And it looks like for the instructional coaches, it's relatively short. I think it goes back to twenty nineteen, whereas like teaching went back to like ninety-six. How should we think about that? I guess one of the questions, you know, why is that the case? You know, there's relatively short tenures so far as instructional coaches. Can we expect that going forward? Is that going to change? But those are the three different topics or questions that I have.
I'll start with the answer to their coaching question, and the biggest reason for that is we haven't had site-based coaches for that long. So we had coaches years ago that were literacy-based. They were cut, and they, that was changed. So we didn't have coaches for a while. They were re-implemented as Donna came in, and so we had site-based coaches. Initially, we had two that expanded to four, and then we added a fifth that changed roles. So Chris's role has been an evolution of a variety of different roles. But we have, Joby came on just recently as one of our coaches left, and so we've had that.
So part of it is people rotating off, part of it is expanding the instructional.
Yep, exactly.
And if I can just add on to that just quickly from a secondary perspective, Jamie and I were reflecting a little bit about our coaching model there. Our middle school team has been, you know, Emily's been, Emily Mills, who met, she's been there for quite a bit of time. We added Maria Fontana into that. But for the first time, since really the coaching began at the high school, we have two coaches who are, they don't have the classroom responsibility, and they're together again this year. I think we kind of mentioned that at the last meeting, but I can't impress upon us all how important that continuity is. Nova and I were in a meeting the other day and remembering that we've been together for nearly a decade, working on the dyslexia work, and, and that's when we came to the district office together. I was a director and she was an admin intern, but that continuity over time is really important, and I think we're building that more and more and trying to sustain and not think about it as a rotating position. Certainly, people want to rotate in and out, but we need to build some consistency. I think we're doing that.
And Heidi will talk about this here in a bit, but part of what we do for sustainability purposes, sorry, different, Heidi, I know I get you every time. Is that, you know, some of these folks, actually a good majority are also letters facilitators. So in thinking about sustainability for the district, it can't always be, you know, Amy Butler, Angela was one of our letters facilitators in a prior year. She is no longer with the district. I am a letter facilitator. But in thinking about keeping that sustainability, we want teachers and coaches to be really be the owners of that work so that, A, they can go off to classrooms and support teachers with that continuation of work, which is job embedded PD, which is going down the highest rate of success. And so that we have sustainability as a district. So when someone leaves, we don't lose traction in that process. And that was part of the plan that we built when we initiated this whole process, was that there was a sustainability plan embedded in that. And we have ongoing conversations about adding more folks to our group as well, our cadre.
Heidi and I both were the original coaches at our site base and have been there since the position opened. So.
We're the grandmas of the team.
I, I was going to add that I, I don't think that, I think that the wealth of experience gives them credibility, gives me credibility when I go into a classroom. I, you, you just have to have it. If you don't have that whole pedagogy experience in back of you, you you just cannot sit there and know what to do next. Yeah, no traction, but also no internal pressure. What do I do next? What do I do? And we frequently are, are together saying, okay, what do we do here? I've got a problem of practice. I, I really don't know where to go next on this one because I'm not, I'm not a primary teacher, but Joby's got tons of years in primary. So, so I think we use each other a lot for that kind of thing, which I think begs that whole, why are, why is there so many years there and not so many in the coaching? I think that's a great question.
So then I'll address your other questions. I think with the second question, I'm not entirely sure what you're thinking about in terms of.
Yeah, so like, I mean, it is the data question about like using iReady. I mean, so for instance, I just got a new Phoenix Pro Six for the holidays, and there's a ton of functionality in data, which is super useful for activities, but like there's a lot of customization, a lot of navigating around screens, and the tool is only useful insofar as one knows how to use it. And so when we're thinking about powerful tools that the district has invested significantly in, and that has great promise and potential, at least theoretically, how is that then, do we think of that in terms of instructional coaches, less the pedagogy and more like how to use tools
Yeah.
in the classroom?
Yeah, so I would say both of those things. So as an ongoing connection, I connect with all of these individuals. So I get information from them about what is or isn't working, and then what we need support with. And then beyond that, they go, coaches go to the classrooms because they're the people that are in the field. So I'm going to kind of go into this next slide here. Actually, this is a bit segue for us. In thinking about those two adoptions, we have benchmark advance and iReady classroom. Both of those things are a heavy lift, not something that we can do in isolation. So when we think about our coaching team, these folks are the ones who go into classrooms to help model lessons or to help work through a lesson to figure out what the next step is, to look at the new data that they have that they've never looked at before, to figure out the usability of the tool in general. How do I access this? What is this extra tool that we've never had before? So they go into those classrooms, and they're the ones that are predominantly supporting the teachers, the classroom teachers throughout that. And then, of course, we have the SPOT PDs throughout the year that help support that through iReady and our partners in iReady.
And is there any formal processes, manner of change, or some customization that's available for iReady? I mean, is there a point person within the instructional coach team that is the liaison to iReady, or how, how does that work?
So I'm the liaison to iReady, but the coaches and the principals meet with them regularly as well. So I'm the one who meets most frequently, then they meet with them as well as the principals. And then we've also divvied up the coaches such that we have half of them functioning as literacy support, and then half of them functioning as math. And then again, that collaboration that they do, because obviously in their buildings, they're not adopting one tool. They're adopting both tools. So they collaborate with one another so that they can better support the teachers in their classrooms. So yes, and yes, and yes.
And if you want a couple of examples of how we're actually using that, when we planned our school improvement plan this year, one of the focuses was on math, and we use the iReady data, the benchmark assessment, to determine or the diagnostic to determine which domain had the most room for improvement or growth at a grade level. So each grade level looked at that data, looked at the domain, and identified which one needs the most support, and then each grade level set a student improvement goal based on the data from their grade level. And then so another example is a second grade teacher, and I worked yesterday, she took the data from her class, and I wanted to involve her students in setting the goals. So we looked at where students lie, and we prepared a presentation that we will give to them in the coming days that will show them, actually look at the data and say, you know, this is where you scored, this is how you're doing. This would be a realistic goal for you to make. They're going to set their own goals and then monitor that over time. So it is being used, and I think it will become easier for all of us as we learn more about it, too. We're learning it at the same time as them, but we're the ones that are in the classroom, actually helping teachers to segregate the data and figure out what they want to do next, as well as contacting the iReady folks, and they come and provide support for us as well. So it's, we're learning alongside with them, but that's where we are at this point.
I have conversations with teachers around the reports that they want to run. I know where to find those reports. I can find a report for whatever you're looking for, but one of the new reports we are just looking at was a Common Core standard report where I can pull one student's report, and it will tell me all the standards they've mastered and which rules they have. So I will get a student, we just. One student's report and it will tell me all the standards they've mastered and which rules they have. So I will get a student, we just ran the data report and. He was missing place value. It was like the one Common Core standard he didn't have and he had everything else in the whole grade one, but just the one, you know. So we know where to target that instruction now, where we really have never had such. Like refined data to see where the holes are. We go constantly talk about this holes in math. We weren't sure where they are and the diagnostic will tell us exactly which skills a student has and which ones they may have a gap in. And it's a quick. Trick, right? It's a quick one. I grabbed a group of five kids. We did another place value for fourth grade and they were just like, oh, and they're older, so it could get faster. So you can see wherever the holes might be and we can just fill them quickly.
And do we expect that like some of those reports will start being available to parents? I mean, I think one of the. Things for the most part, at least my perspective of this, you know, it's a little bit of a black box from a parent's perspective in terms of the data. You know, like the traditional spelling test that my daughter does with twenty like spelling words, like each week, like I get it back, I see it, like I know exactly like how she's done. I hear about the diagnostic tests that are run quite frequently on iReady. And I hear her tell me about it, but I don't get any sort of communication from the school about that.
Yeah, so a couple of clear up occasions. The diagnostic happens three times a year. So a teacher could share that, there's a four families report and some of this will be talked about in the iReady family night that we have coming up that first week of February. So. We've sent some communications out and we'll send an email blast out to families as well to share that with them. That's virtual so they can join from home. It will be recorded. So if a family can't attend, we'll be posting that so that they can see it later. But they'll talk a little bit about that family access and I think our teachers are starting to now learn a bit more about those tools and those reports. On Monday, in fact, when they have our PD day, the iReady team will come and talk through the growth reports that are available. Which is one of, I started, Fred and I started looking at it a little bit and it's just really exciting to see some of the growth that has happened in this tool. And so on Monday, when they come, they'll start talking about that and they'll talk about some of those reports that they can share with families. And I think in year one, it's important for us to help. Have to give teachers the access and time and space to learn the tool. And then once they feel that confidence of using the tool, then we have the opportunity to say, okay, now it's time. We want to make sure that you're sharing this information with families. So now we can layer those expectations in. I think if we layer that in to start, it detracts a little bit from the progress that's made in instruction. I understand as a parent where you're coming from and I totally agree. And I think we'll get there. I absolutely believe that.
I have a question. In a case like what Joby, what you were talking about going in and teaching the curriculum on social emotional, you know, self-regulation, that kind of stuff. Um, is the idea that the next year, those teachers will teach it themselves? And then if they then teach it themselves, like I'm kind of like medical school where it's like, see one, do one, teach one, right? Like are they then passing that information along or like, what's the follow up kind of to that? Like if they. Teach it next year, but they have trouble, do they then like ask for help from instructional coach? Like what's the kind of?
Sure, that's a great question. It hasn't been defined at this point. It could be any number of those things. If coaches are still in place next year, I would imagine that I would continue to offer that. And go into classrooms and do that. And with teachers who wanted to go teach, we would do that. If coaches are not part of the elementary school next year, then teachers would have the option to do it themselves or it would be abandoned. If there isn't a plan set in place for how it would look after this, this was just based on the data that we have been gathering based on what our students need right now at this time. This was a response to that. It may or may not be necessary to continue it next year. Again, it'll just depend on the number of referrals that come to the student support team. So great question. I haven't thought that through. However, I I don't think we have an answer for that at this point.
Yeah, I think it's still too new for that.
Yeah, yeah. It's so needed.
Thank you. I I will say, Joby made a great point, like it it's based like. The way that we step into our work is based off of what teachers identify, what data is helping us identify and have clarity around. And whether it's Joby being the one to actually teach the lesson or he is working with a teacher alongside a teacher, helping them. Understand, you know, all the ins and outs and intricacies of executive function and what that looks like for students. It can look so different depending on what it is the teacher is identifying as and need. So if this, if this year. Teachers are, you know, leaning on Joby to lead that work within the instructional realm. Like that, like they are blaming so much understanding just from, you know, having those conversations with their students. A teacher at my school identified one student in her class who might benefit. And as we kind of started to. I'm sorry, benefit from specific executive function skills around organization. And this was brought up in an SST meeting. And as we started to kind of peel back the layers and discuss like how we might teach organization to and. Learning students. We discovered that it's not something that just one student needs. It's something that all the students in that teacher's class would benefit from. So through our conversations and reflection, she was able to build out multiple lessons, like how to organize my desk, how to organize my backpack. And these are some things teachers need to do naturally in more primary grades, but you know, seeing what the need is post COVID, like. It would kind of get creative with how we're supporting our students.
And Heidi, sorry about the water bottle toss.
Can you talk about SST?
Yeah, that's good. So and I think it's kind of Heidi, what you're saying in first, I want to say that I love the the non evaluative space. I think that one of the best ways to support our students. Is to support our teachers. And I that's what I'm hearing, that instructional coaches support the teachers. So I think that is really a powerful privilege that we have at our mercy. And I appreciate that. So I'm also hearing you say, and I think that's what some of the boarders saying, you know, a lot of the service that we do are very individualized, which is really great. But as we have to, we get more creative because of this, the need is so much higher and because we have less than resource, right? Then how do we think, and I think this is what some of the questions, how do we take what we do on an individual basis to systematize? Do you know, like, are we creating videos? Are we posting up there? Are we providing? Those kind of. This and that, right? Because like in therapy, we can no longer do one on one therapy all of the time, right? We have to kind of address it ninety percent before they get. So that's how I'm hearing. Some of my board members talk and then kind of the balance between individualized services and also systematizing our services. And then also I know that we do a lot of a student evaluation, like for the three sixty evaluation. And I wonder, and this is kind of a question, like do we. Survey our teachers of what they need now, right? To make sure that what they need aligns as a whole system. And not just those who seek help, because those who seek help, just like therapy is only sometimes a small percentage of the help, but there's more other folks that need help. And so have we thought about doing or are we currently doing a survey of teachers of how they, the instructional coach is helping them in the areas of?
Yeah, I am just going to tell you, our teachers are surveyed to death, the volume of surveys. Coaching services. So yes, the answer is that they do lots of surveys to find out what supports they need. And I'm going to transition us actually back to this slide because this slide talk speaks to your other question around that and speaks to Superintendent Reynolds' question around SST. So some of those district wide supports that we design are surrounding the survey information that teachers give back. We also do exit slips every time we do a PD. So we get feedback from them. We ask them what they enjoyed, what they still need, what they have questionings about, what they want us to change about future PD. So we get lots of feedback from them around that so that we can model whatever we do next, more toward what their needs are in a universal way. I'm going to kind of jump into the building based PD. I'm not sure if he was doing something. Okay. Because I think that speaks to that question in terms of what. What we design at the building level, because even though we have four elementarys on the same small island. Each of these elementarys, even in the data that Joby shared, is significantly different. Our demographics are different to each of those elementarys. So the needs are slightly different even within those teachers. So the PD that's building based is designed in conjunction with principals and coaches. To meet those needs. So I'll have Joby speak.
Sure. So part of our responsibility in working with Nova is to recruit teachers to help present professional development. For us to also present, plan and deliver this professional development. I'll give you a few examples of the professional development that we have. Put together and have begun to implement this year and that we will continue to offer at our next session. And just as Nova described, it is based on what teachers say they need in one. And some of that is around the curriculum. Implementation and some of it is around other things. So for example, when we think about the most, the focus on our professional development this year has been on iReady and benchmark. Implementation and the supports that people need. What are their ongoing needs? And if they're asked constantly, what do you need frequently? We've had what we call our mini professional developments and we had one in December and then we have another one next Wednesday. And there's the possibility of a third. I'm not sure if the date has been finalized or what will happen that day. But it is, there are four different areas, the curriculum adoption, there are some offerings for staff on inclusion. So one of those is on the restorative justice component. And then another one was offered on multilingual support strategies by our English language learning staff that provided support for. Not just folks who are ELL teachers, but other teachers or people that may be interested in knowing how they provide for that inclusion. There's a lot of talk about rigor and the need for depth of knowledge and for challenge and rigor in our district. And so there were two offerings, one on depth of knowledge and one in December was offered for. I ready. And the one next week will be depth of knowledge as it relates to literacy. And the map access points, Chris Cocklin Ray was a part of a team and Lisa Beanstalk creating a document for how to access. Math standards at various levels. So here's the standard. What do you do if a student succeeding that standard? What do you do for those who are about at the standard? What do you do for those who are at risk of not meeting the standard? And so. There's some training that folks have been given back as well if you elected to sign up for that one. And then we had something when you think about the whole child and the social emotional. Impact that we've seen in recent years, a tier one strategy. So tier one, our strategies or implementations that you would offer in the general classroom that are good for all students. But what do you do when students are dysregulated or they're having social emotional disturbance? What are some things the classroom teacher might do to actually address that and help provide some support to them? So those are what our PD offerings are. So when we talk about systematizing or making it. Unilateral across the district, all four elementary schools are participating in those. So we have a balance of both. We need to meet the needs of individual teachers and what they need. To grow professionally and for that specific curriculum student, and we're also addressing, these are the needs that teachers have said they had that we're going to offer to all four elementary schools. So. I think if I'm answering your question, I think we're doing both or we're attempting to do both. If that makes sense, if I can explain it any better.
Sure. So one of the most exciting things I feel that the instructional coaches at the elementary school level has done is participate. In our student support team. Process. So prior to twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, every building had a different process to support a student in need. If a student currently has an IEP, then they have a team that's ready to activate whatever they need. But if a student is not currently. With a plan, then teacher needs support with a student. We have this SST. And it was kind of all over the place. Every building did it differently. Teachers were receiving stipends to. Run these meetings if they had time. And we as instructional coaches were building base, were able to take this as their lead. And we work closely with Aaron Battersea to make sure that we were doing the documentation process appropriately, should it lead to a BGT. Which then needs to be documented in a certain way. So. Worked with laundry to make sure it was systemized across all four buildings and that we have one central place to store all the information. So. As of right now, we have a folder for all four buildings. The form is exactly the same. The resources we try to access are the same. So we know it's unilateral across. All the buildings. And the nice part about that was. I are, we share our school psychologist who we also work very closely with and the student support team in any building consists of the teacher who's referring the student. The instructional coach. You'll probably invite your LSP teacher if there's a reading. Issue, if it's, we have gross motor skills, your PE teacher might show up, your previous teacher might come. We invite different people. According to what the students' needs might be and we have these meetings before school. And during that time, we brainstorm some interventions. That may be currently in place. And if they're working, do you have the data to show that it is or isn't working? So that is our space and a safe space to talk about what's happening. We'll do a pre SST meeting to make sure a teacher can bring the data with them to say. We don't want teachers throwing up at this meeting saying, I don't know, not working out. So you have to come with some data. So the coaches will go in ahead of time and. Talk with the teacher and say, what are you going to bring to this meeting so that we can have a look at the data and what's happening with this one student? With our site, our, we invite our school psychologists to come to these meetings. And so interesting to see is they're dated by the year. So we were able to hand over. The fifth grade SST forms of students who are receiving whatever accommodations they've worked right up to the middle school now. And that has never ever been. And so Usma, who's happened to be our psychologist at Lake Ridge, is also the one at IMS. And I was like. This is the folder, like that you want. And it was old fifth grade and now it's a sixth grade. So she's really able to see some historical data on a student that maybe not be getting. IEP online, they don't have a service, but this is like, there was a concern or this is what works with this one teacher because we keep that documentation pretty. Tight and it's all in compliance. And I'll just speak to this vertical calibration. With the elementary schools coaches. We work together as a team all the time. And. Prior to this, I've not been at Lake Ridge since twenty fourteen. Occasionally, we did some. Group work with Lake. I think we were closer with Island Park for a while because we used to do our PEs with Island Park, but there isn't a ton of. Grade band or talking across the different grades as what as we would like. There's only so many professional developments you get in a year. And the instructional coaches are able to calibrate across the just like the four buildings so that. It's more consistent than I think it's ever been in terms of what's being delivered in any third, fourth, fifth. K classroom across all four buildings. And it's really the instructional coaches that can speak to, what are the best practices happening in your kindergarten classroom? I'm going to bring that back to my school. I'm going to offer a learning walk, what's happening at your school. So we are really the facilitators. Like opening up the window into all the other buildings, which I think has been great. And in collaboration with the middle school. I've taken it upon myself to really look at like the middle school curriculum and how well is our fifth grade. Ready to transition to the middle school, whether it be for math or for reading and the instructional coaches. I have a good relationship with Emily and Maria to say, let's bring our fifth grade teachers up to the middle school. And let's do some more learning walks over there. And I really feel like the space with the instructional coaches, we're able to do that. And have the time and space.
And with Heidi on data.
Yeah.
Slip to the next one? Sure. So with regard to data analysis, there are so many different pockets of data that we can pull from as instructional coaches that. Otherwise, a single teacher might not be able to access. So one. One of my favorite pieces of data that I was digging through recently was our Ames Web data. And at over the last four years, the. District has really made a concerted effort to provide. Training for our kindergarten, first and second grade teachers using the letters professional development. And so letter stands for language essentials for teachers of reading and spelling. And this is really the science of reading and brain based research and how to best instruct students, all children. But especially students who might have dyslexia or might have difficulties with learning how to read. So we have made over the last four years, all kindergarten, first, second grade teachers, last year, our fifth grade teachers were able to attend this training. Any new staff member, our ELD teachers, our learning support teachers, our special education teachers, basically anybody who works with a K five shop. So prior to two thousand and nineteen, we have been using one tool called Ames Web to administer to students. And I was looking at our kindergarten end of year data from two thousand and nineteen. And about eighty percent of the students were at the fortieth percentile or higher. In one of those, the subtests that we administer, it's called phoneme segmentation. I'm going to just say why the fortieth percentile is important. The fortieth percentile, of course, with an average range. Is important because that's the end of your target for any grade level as your measure. So we want students to minimum be at that fortieth percentile to indicate. Outcomes, but future outcomes to be successful for them. So. To some people that might look pretty good. However, after all of our kindergarten teachers going through the letters professional development during the. Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. And then there was kind of this pandemic that happened. So. Sprint data from twenty twenty. But looking at our next data set at the end of the year, twenty twenty one. Ninety eight percent of our students were at or above the fortieth percentile, which half of our year was virtual.
Maybe like you're doing a lot of reading.
Yes, but that will not impact phoneme segmentation.
The reason I chose this subskill is because this is something that some teachers might. Um, the, the reason I chose this um, subskill is because this is something that some teachers might have been doing a little bit. Here and there some of the time, but having attended the letters training and really understanding the way that these little brains need to be wired. And the discrete set of skills that students need to acquire developmentally in order to get to that point where they can start to read and blend and sound out words. This phoneme segmentation skill is really something that might have been overlooked a little bit prior to this letters professional development. So seeing these numbers was really um, exciting as someone who has, is now a trainer um, with the letters professional development. Um, and also a huge like pat on the back, shout out to our kindergarten, first and second grade teachers who have taken this and run with it. As uh, instructional coaches, we are able to be in the building with them, we're able to step in, review data with them in real time. We're able to help them problem solve, help them access, you know, resources, model things for them. So this is a great example of job and bed professional development that is having a significant impact on student learning.
I don't think you can really underestimate that. And I, I don't think you guys are giving your, you're not giving yourself enough credit. Many of us have high school age and and beyond where our kids at Mercer Island were not getting, learning to read with phonics. And watching the struggle and the number of kids that were abandoning the dis- the district because it wasn't working for them, the levels of dyslexia. I can't imagine that um, the diagnosis rate is much different now, but the, the reading. Um, I mean, these, this instruction is actually meeting the needs of our kids. So thank you for all that work on that because I, I, I mean, I'm watching it make a difference. And um, I mean, I think we can tell like, you know, we know the places that people go and it just maybe I'm a little bit out of the loop because I'm not at the elementary schools anymore. But um, I, I don't think there's this big exodus like there was. And I mean, I think that demonstrates it right there. Yeah.
And I think that, you know, I mean, really the teachers are the reason that this is where it is. Uh, I mean, they came into this and they were really truly invested and they've taken the tools that we've given them and they've really run with them as I referenced. And I think that, um, I believe that our teachers can rival the work in any of those private school systems to support the kids in learning to read. I really believe that. Letters is IDA accredited, so I just want to think that that's an important feature. We just, uh, Nova and I just came from an all-day training with some of our uh, teachers today. And one of the teachers had recently just finished her master's in literacy, in literacy and raised her hand and said, why did I not learn this? I just finished my program last year. Why is this not part of something that I'm learning? And we wish it was something that was provided to everybody, but we are so fortunate that the district continues to invest the resources into this professional development. And um, I have the trainers. Yeah, fortunate that we are building something that, you know, will definitely wise, keep going. Jovi can speak to it as a kindergarten teacher.
Yeah, Jovi was asking one of the hard questions asked her at that.
Well, I talked for, gosh, what about twenty-three years before I'd had that training? And it wasn't until I had that training that, oh my gosh, we've been doing it wrong. We just didn't know, we didn't have the knowledge that we have now, the research database. This would be that change in the last three years that I talked in here and was just the way you went. The confidence and the power that these kids had and were able to do and to actually put the code together was my boy. It was really fascinating.
Yeah. And Jovi is, you know, I mean, at the very first training that I had, I think I can tell her, he raised his hand and he said, so why do we have so many leveled text? If we know that leveled text is not what helps support students in learning to read. And Amy and I looked at each other then training together and we both said, you're right. And so now the program that we have has significant uh, volume of decodable text, which is really what's going to help build those skill sets for kids. Um, and making sure that they're successful readers and decoders of text.
So I think, you know, just kind of closing that out, um, you know, you've had a chance now as a board to kind of see middle school, secondary and elementary. And just kind of reiterating what I had said last time, um, you know, it was quite surprising when I arrived here and we didn't have coaches. Um, and I, if I think back even some of our adoptions, math expressions, um, any of the Lucy Calkins work. Um, you know, there wasn't that systemic piece. We didn't have a backbone structure. Um, we were depending on, you know, teachers in the classroom who after school could come to do a training, but they're exhausted. And um, you know, the, the benefits of being able to have um, our teachers supported, our principals supported. Um, and really this, this, um, you know, ubiquitous support from our coaches is really impressive. And I appreciate you all taking the time of the year tonight.
I like to think we're the executors, like, right? Like your initiatives, it's like not in a bad.
I got this, he was looking like a SWAT team, like a response team, right? It's like teachers are.
And that's really how we operate, like what teachers need, but also really the execute divisions. And the initiatives of the district have decided is most important, it's UDL. We were there doing modeling UDL lessons and giving, you know, whatever supports teachers needed at that moment. And now as we move into these two new adoption curriculums and depth of knowledge and data, and how do we use this awesome data that we finally have? That's really, really telling about where a student was at in our math journey. Um, I think it's really exciting as we work, moves on the ground.
Maybe, maybe we need a new title, like, um, maybe the job title should be like the teacher and student, like learning support, like rapid response.
As uh, as new teachers come in and, you know, you were talking about teachers who hadn't learned this before. How do we ensure that these type of results are long-lived? You know, as first graders, we get to the teachers and um, but we still keep seeing these.
Well, we're training them as they come in. So yeah.
So you'll redo the training.
Oh yeah, the cohort we had today was um, any new teacher, new staff member to us that fits into any of the categories that we're requiring the training for. For a long day, so we decided to come still. Yeah. So, and we added some resources. If you want to take a look at some of the resource development, they were of course a part, all of these fabulous humans were a part of the literacy protocol. Our um, third grade essentials extensions, uh, I ready materials. So we've got lots of materials that they've helped facilitate generation of.
T L S R R T. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
It is uh. Can we keep going? Okay, and no public input either, right? Just checking again. Nothing so. Uh, let's go back up to uh, to a um. We can apply that one and you could, if you want to go back to that, we can or slide that one and you can go right into fundamental two, since that kind of builds on maybe academic stuff they've been talking about.
Sure. Okay, let's go to two B then on fundamental two, any language or monitoring updates to fundamental.
Yes, so one of the things I think. When reviewing it, I guess the, the last regular board meeting and the agenda item, it said, uh, to, you know, board policy eighteen hundred. OE two, and it said the highest academic standards, um, which I think I know what it means. And that's how I always read it. And then I actually looked at the language and it said maintain the highest learning standards. And I don't know what learning standards means. Um, and I think the confusion, I mean, appears that like perhaps like we as a school district are not clear in it either. Given that it was also mistitled in the agenda item from the twelve. I mean, more fundamentally to me, which is for, you know, I think in another board meeting, but is how do we monitor this? Um, what I felt and feel is missing is any consideration of the course offerings that we offer in our school district. And I'm not sure how we can maintain the highest learning standards or academic standards. Um, and not review what courses we offer and what pathways there are for various students. Um, so that's the beginning of the conversation, I think, like the edit in terms of language. Um, whether we, you know, decide to, to vote on it today or in conjunction perhaps with uh, another stab at, at the superintendent's. Uh, interpretation of this fundamental, which is I noted from our January twelve board meeting. Um, I think does not say highest learning standards or say hi, highest academic standards, it just will meet state standards. Uh, which seems a bit different. Um, but yeah, I guess the first question is, and I don't know if anyone has history of what learning standards is supposed to capture that academic standards would not. And then two is sort of thoughts in terms of a timing for, or I guess like maybe it's a board discussion about the superintendent's. Uh, interpretation, which I feel is not, it's not yours, it was, you know, it predates you, although you're now the superintendent and something that you inherited. Um, like I, I do not feel that it reflects what uh, two is about.
So I'll just jump in and say for me, the, the question about the curriculum decisions and, and um, what things we offer is really in fundamental one. Because that's about differentiated instruction, student-centered education and varied learning opportunities. And to me, varied learning opportunities, like that's about what we're teaching.
I think you, the other component of it, um, just historically, when the rewrite was being done of the interpretation of fundamental two. Um, is the, those different areas that you see broken out are the ones that are in the state standards. And so I think the academic, the learning standards and the academic standards, I think, are probably being used synonymously there. Um, because they were, what are those different core categories that Washington State has identified in terms of the standards that extend K through twelve? Um, on there. And there was quite a conversation about that, as I recall at the board table, around what should the interpretation entail? Should it match exactly what OSPI has or slight deviation?
Yeah, just so you know, for history, when this came up two years ago, like I did not like the listing, like I did not like the order that these items were listed in. To me, it would have made more sense to have like English language arts, mathematics, you know, et cetera, like first and then the other stuff later. And also I didn't, I struggled with the fact that educational technology was listed on there because that's not something that we're teaching. So why are we talking about highest learning standards in the areas of education? I don't know. Anyway, but, but the answer is we kept it like this because this is what the state uses.
Yeah, and I get, that's my, that's my issue. In the day, we have the highest, we have the highest learning, we have the highest academic standards.
Yeah.
And then we say, and that means we will meet state standards. And I do not think Mercer Island is a median school district or like one that just is, you know, trying to barely clear the bar for state standards. And like, and even if, a- a- and that also doesn't like jive with highest academic or highest learning standards.
So in the superintendent's interpretation, we call him the same or higher level of cognitive demand. Parenthesis, critical thinking as defined in Washington State learning standards. So we've got academic standards, you've got educational standards, and we've got cognitive demand is all synonymous. And yet they all lead us to state standards, which is an interesting place to be. Now, so, so two metrics I was thinking about that were at least interesting to me. So I, I reflect on the fact that we have the capstone project for band, which is really awesome. It is just a great penultimate project that, you know, takes you into the best music schools and it's a great portfolio. So what's the equivalent for STEM? So at least one metric, that's an early metric, so this call walk route. At least an early metric for me would be can a student get, how many students do we have in calculus in grade ten or grade eleven? That's an interesting metric, because what we're finding is the kids in STEM are actually taking linear algebra um, in high school. And then when they go to college, they are just so much more prepared. Even if they, even if they got a forty percent of linear algebra in high school, they are still so much more prepared to do it again in college. And it makes a huge difference. Um, so wanting, so that would be one metric, one metric would be how many tenth graders or eleventh graders, I think we can probably start with eleven graders. Achieved calculus and then by definition, they would be able to do a higher level of math in twelfth grade.
Or have the option to achieve calculus.
It's just the count of how many did that. So, so I, I would, I would envision the count might be similar to how many take the band capstone project. It's not a huge number, but, but by having that, that ability over time. Trickles down to all the other courses that more and more kids uh, have that capability. We've got.
Can you, I don't understand, I'm not seeing a correlation between a capstone project and advancing in a. Oh, subject matter.
Uh, I think a capstone project for band is.
That's like putting together a portfolio that you could present of all your work. That's different than just taking a class.
It just represents a level of achievement that you are doing that, like it's equivalent to creating a thesis.
But doesn't a transcript say that based on the class they took? I don't, I, I'm not, I just don't.
I, I'm just, I'm just saying that it, it is the type of project that would appeal to people who are taking, achieving the very highest levels of uh, success in music.
I think a little bit of the confusion is because you earlier on, you said a capstone project, where is the capstone project in STEM? So is that also something that you're interested in, like?
Eventually, eventually, I, I was, I was talking about crawl walk run.
Uh, yeah.
Kind of the, the crawl would be, let's start out by looking at. The tenth or eleventh grade level, that's a crawl.
And I assume you also, you know, if we have it in arts, that we would have it in, in uh, visual arts and we would have it in humanities. And you would have it in, in deckham topics. I mean, to me, this isn't a, I, I worry about, you know, like picking groups of kids based on what they do. Um, I mean.
STEM is a pretty big category as in, in pathways. I mean, like, I get, the question is, what's, what's our course catalog?
I mean, how many of our kids actually take calculus? And I don't think it's because they can't. Well, like, you think it's a problem, I don't think it's a problem. I think the kids that want to take calculus are able to take calculus. I think the kids that don't want to take calculus and see no purpose for what their dreams are ahead of, of, you know, ahead of them, don't need to take it. I took calculus, don't even know what it is, never used it in my life. If, if I was able to take business statistics or accounting or finance, I would have taken that as my fourth year advanced math rather than calculus. So I, you guys are in the world, well, you're at least in the world of STEM. So you're very focused on that. I think we really need to be looking at, we're a public school. We need to be looking at all of our students and the things, like if you're trying to talk about, if you want to talk about a capstone project for all of our seniors, then a lot of, especially private schools do. I think that's great, where they get a credit for it and they dive deep, like what college students do a thesis or an independent study. That's fantastic. Let, let's let our kids choose what they want to do. And if they want to dive deep in linear algebra, they can do a project on that. They want to dive deep in foreign arts and put together a portfolio, amazing. If they want to do some sort of debate or communications thing or radio project, awesome, out for it. I, I mean, I really, I think what turns, at least it turns me off, I'll speak for myself, is this very focus on, you know, on these, these elitist groups. Um, at least what's seen as elitist, we need to be focusing on all our kids and letting them each achieve their heights. If that's what you're saying, I wholeheartedly agree. If you're not saying that and want to do more for the kids that are already excelling in one particular area. I, they're going to get there if they want to.
Like then we have no job, we shouldn't be teaching them, right? Like, like those are the most accelerated, we have no job to do.
The classes are going to be offered, but they want to take calculus, they can take calculus. If they're two years ahead and want to go to UW and take linear algebra, there's kids, there's a handful of kids that do that a year.
I, I, I think you're, I think you're missing, missing the issue though.
Or you're not explaining it well. So I, I'm asking you.
So I guess, I guess what we're trying, I don't, uh, getting a little bit more clarification, what we're trying to do here. So Dan, are you saying that we say that we are meeting the highest learning standards, but in the superintendent operation expectation, it doesn't list that? So then what I'm hearing is that are we identify what is our baseline that meets state standards? And then uh, thinking beyond, right, also what David's saying, have other metrics like capstone or maybe uh, you know, linear algebra and all these things. But then, but then those are different options at the highest, right? Because like, how do I identify what is state standard? And that is our basic education. But it would be good to. But it would be good to within all these uh, discipline, right? To think within math, what is that next level to meet this standard? As in arts, what is that next level? And maybe we have it already, but we haven't really articulated what is baseline. And what is, like, are we achieving more?
Well, I didn't want to boil the ocean, I guess was my point. Um, you know, I was using analogies of. Our, our band, band is a very singular kind of marquee program for which I. And we, we cultivated the, the band curriculum, starting in fourth and fifth grade. All the way up to twelfth, and we've got, you know, multiple venues of band, whether it's orchestra and steel drums and. It's, it's, uh, it's, it really is a marquee curriculum in and of itself that produces intensely good recidivism. I had no interest in it, right? But I, I see the value in that. Right? It, I, I, I couldn't play guitar when I was forced to learn guitar as a kid. But I see the value in band, and I don't deny, and I wouldn't deny that program to kids in band. But what I'm thinking is on Mercer Island, we are lacking in STEM. And our support, and one simple way of, how do we? Get a STEM curriculum that starts to mirror a band curriculum? In terms of helping kids achieve the highest, we've got so many band kids achieving the highest levels of. Mu- music players, we see it every uh, graduation. It's not just three or four elite kids, it is a lot of kids because of how well cultivated the band program is. Can we do the same in STEM?
So maybe one of the things, um, so I'm thinking about a couple of things. One is before we say that we are offering everything we can, even in fine arts, we haven't necessarily. Done a review for you or shown you what that course catalog looks like. So before we say that we do or don't have enough STEM, you know, there might be some room for some study session here to help you. See what that course catalog really looks like and the pathways that exist. Then we can look at and say, as a board, representatives of the community. You know what? This may be an area we are reviewing and looking at all the time. Right now, math continues to be a review as we do textbook reviews. Um, and so I'm hearing some of it is bringing you into. Um, where these discussions happen and then kind of showing you the pathways. Then the other part that I'm hearing is, Andries, if you'll bring up our website really quickly. And go to the school board fundamentals two. And then if you'll pull up the profile document from January twelfth. Yes, please. So the second part then that I'm hearing is, are we measuring the right? Things here and, or should we be looking at a couple of different metrics? That you're interested in as a school board to help us. Then the third part is, what does that superintendent interpretation look like and does it reflect? What is in the fundamental itself? So I feel like there's kind of three prompts here. Some of it's some learning that needs to happen. Some of it is maybe reviewing this. And then the third is, if you agree that fundamental two. Says what you want it to say as a board, then superintendent. Can you go back and review what that interpretation looks like and possibly do some tweaking? Based on the discussions that you're having and what the values are.
Yeah, I mean, to just try to like bring it concretely home about sort of pathways and the courses that we offer. When I hear highest academic slash learning standards, I say, okay, when I look at like math pathways is one. How do we compare to adjacent districts, to North Shore, like both, you know, where? My understanding is ten percent plus of sixth graders are taking uh, algebra. Like, how do we, well. Well, SBA tells you just part of it. It just tells you like how many students are not failing.
Well, and what, and it tells you how many kids are taking it, not how many kids are succeeding.
Well, we can, we can get there, but I mean, the SBA tells you something, but it's just, I mean, it's, it's just part of it. It's by no means the whole story in a district like ours, and certainly not if you're trying to capture highest learning standards. Um, I, I.
Isn't it highest learning standard for each student? I mean, otherwise, we're going to have ninety-nine percent of our kids feeling like failures.
No, 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 what you're saying by offering an advanced course, we can't do that because some kids will not.
I never said that. I said it's being offered. Our kids aren't signing up for it. That's why it isn't an in-person.
We don't have the pathways that get you there.
Sure we do. Geometry, algebra two, the kids can start earlier if their abilities and interests align. Then there's pre-calculus and then there's calculus.
Which is the standard pathway for the elementary district, by the way.
That's our pathway.
Be honest. Yeah.
This seems like a great topic for like a study session, maybe? Like, not, I don't mean, I don't mean this was on the agenda, but I mean the bigger topic of like. Our STEM pathways, math in particular, like, 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 I, I have. Lived this on both sides with kids that are like behind in math and kids that wouldn't like to have been able to do more in math. Ironically, my son is now in his first year of college and couldn't take a math class this year because he'd done too much at Mercer Island High School, so. So, like, I'd love to dive more into this, but I would like to. Stay on topic with the actual, like, what we're saying about this. That like, for example, when I look up learning standards, like on the OSPI website. They're basically setting some very minimum standards for like what? Kids should learn in reading, for example, in math, for example. So I think that the question of like, are we offering the most? Advanced possible pathways for a public high school or like kids who are really. Really serious about math, dedicated to math, want to learn more, need it for what they want to do in life. You know, I feel like that's a diff- a little different, different question. So what, so that may be something we want to put into our fundamental. You know, that we are, we are like pushing the boundaries of like what is possible, that we are creating the most advanced possible pathway for, for kids who are interested in STEM. I, I'm just saying, well, for like, that it's, it's, there, I feel like we're actually talking about like two or three different topics here that are kind of all smushed together. I think doing a review of our off, course offerings is great, because I don't under- I mean, we've got robotics, we've got, um. What's it called? The things that fly in our drones. We have, I'm sorry, not my word. We have computer science, we have AP computer science, it's getting more and more popular. I know it doesn't meet your standards, but um, I. We also, I'm a struggle finding teachers for it. So, um, I, I don't understand what's. We've got robotics club where tons of kids participate. That's a capstone project in and of itself. They're, they're developing. Robots that, that do things. So what's, I don't, well.
I think the challenge, Deborah, you're, you're not an expert in the field.
I'm not an expert in the field, that's why I'm asking these questions, but you're not an expert in education, which is why our job is for. Is to ask our experts in education the questions.
I, I, and so I've got two metrics, so I'll come back, two metrics. Board gets to change two things. One is fundamental two. I'm kind of okay with that. The other one is what we monitor. So the two metrics for me, I'll just put out there, two metrics for me would be how many kids achieve. Uh, calculus by tenth grade and by eleventh grade, and I'd like to see that number go up. And then the second metric would be, how many teachers have STEM degrees? Those would be, those would be my two metrics.
So what if, what about STEM degrees and or as another item, additional training in STEM, for example, additional training in how to teach STEM classes in the faculty?
So I, I think, um, so a couple of things, if we're going to go down this road, I do think. We have a lot of other voices and perspectives that should probably be part of a conversation around.
Sure.
Courses that are being taught. You have phenomenal educators, um, who have been doing this for a long time, as long as some of our coaches here tonight. Um, who can help maybe explain what it is that we're doing in some of our courses. There is an element that you're asking of an HR question that before we talk about whether or not to measure it or not. Maybe we need to do some learning about what it takes to get the credentials and, and how endorsements work and some of that. Because that might help, you know, paint that picture a little bit of what, of what that looks like. But I do think Director Tucker, I mean, I, and I saw Director Dan kind of nodding that. You know, a study session where we identify what is the, what is the questions that we want as a board to answer? And then as a staff, we can think about who are the right people and how might we phrase that? Um, however we do it, um, there's a lot of passion amongst you as a board. Um, because you care about education and that's one of the great things about our district. Um, I think your passion certainly came through tonight in appreciation of our coaches. I think it also came through um, two weeks ago. Um, and there were some poignant and hard questions for our, for our staff who were here. If we're going to bring staff, I think we have to make sure we're thinking about how are we going to be asking those questions and what that's going to look like. What I'm getting, getting at is, it's okay to be, to disagree and, and, and have your. Uh, disagreements at this table and that's you as a board get to, get to do that. Um, I think our secondary coaches didn't have the same um, experience as our elementary coaches tonight. And I think we need to be sensitive that if we're going to ask staff to come, that we're looking for their expertise, we're not putting them on the stand and really grueling grading them or um. Um, really, you know, grilling them, um, because that's going to put them on the defensive. If we're going to have them here, what's their expertise? And if we then don't agree that we have everything we need, we need to set new metrics and then that's how we go.
I just want to say one, one last thing, which is just a spread of the language of like highest learning standards versus highest academic standards. I would be completely changing it from learning to academic, because I feel that that is not inclusive of like all of our learners. I think that highest learning standards is a term that means every student learning to the best of their ability to maximize their potential. Whereas if you say highest academic standards, those may be standards that like some kids just aren't able to meet because of where they're at in terms of their learning style or their, you know. Situation. So I prefer the term learning, we're talking about that. And I do want to say that also, some of this discussion, what you're talking about. Is, should affect kind of um, fundamental one with the varied learning opportunities. So just to have in mind that there's two fundamentals really that we're thinking about here.
So, I appreciate that you brought this up and like, I agree, I don't think there's anything wrong with this. It's in our implementation and how interpreted and it's not consistent. And so, uh, your plan, uh, but I think makes sense of your three prompts of what you bring to the board to kind of think about. To understand what we have right now, what are basic, and then what is extra kind of the highest? I do agree, kind of look at other school district because we're so close. That people talk and you know, whether it's right or not, at least we should compare and we should. Have a rationale of why we chose one versus the other, and why we chose to do it the Mercer Island way. You know, but if we don't have that rationale, then it doesn't really matter to parents, right? So I think we should look at the other school district. And actually, when I hear you talk, David, what I hear from the band example. Even though we have all these classes, what is so amazing about the band is the culture. You know, kind of like the fostering of the love of the band and really part of the community culture. And so just the fact that we have all these classes does not create a culture, STEM culture. And so I think what I'm hearing, uh, when I, you talk, David. It makes me say, if we're really reaching the highest, it's not just offering the classes. But how do we inspire this culture for students to really go into the different pathway? And really allow them to hit their highest, you know, possibility. And we offer as best as we can, you know, all of these options. But I think beyond the class, I, I, uh, later on, not now, I mean, class suffer, but then how do we create a culture? Of really aspiring to be the best that we can be, uh, wherever that is.
I mean, I think on a positive example, but I think that shows the need for reviewing our offerings is last week. Um, there was the AMCA, the American Math Competition at the middle school. Thirty to forty students like showed up to take it. As far as I'm aware, there was minimal notification from the administration to students. Um, letting them know the opportunity to, to participate in it. In spite of the lack of publication widely of, of that opportunity. A lot of people in our district showed up and are passionate about math. That is what they are focused on. And it's not because parents are pushing them. It's because like that's their passion. Like certain students it's band, certain students it's softball. Student, students, it's drama. Um, but math and science offerings are. And I think the question is how, when we say highest academic standards, how is that hitting to the extent feasible? In every category, wherever that may be, whether it's band or fine arts and. And I get like at a certain point, it might be too niche, too small for us as a district to offer it. But let's be clear of what we can offer and, and what we can't and the, and the reasons for it. And as I said, going back, you know, like when one looks and we'll get to some of the data later. Um, but like math, I mean, the evidence is, is there is a huge amount of passion on the island. Um, that it doesn't seem as being fully capitalized on.
So, there are no changes necessarily right this moment. We've got some learning, we've got some work to do that might lead to some changes. Um, what I would say is to your point, um, Director D'Souza. When you say we're not trying to boil the ocean, I appreciate that because we have the long range facility master plan committee. Long range facility committee. We have a super, uh, we have a non superintendent search that's done, we have a principal search. Um, we have, um, uh, we're heading into, you know, discussions around RIF and some other stuff. We have budget things, so we've got a lot of things kind of going as a district. So I think we've got to think, where does this play out? So between now and. Perhaps definitely our meeting, when we're doing agenda setting, I'll be thinking about kind of timelines and where this might fit in. As a board though, I think coming back on the night and having that kind of timeline discussion. I fully appreciate the urgency of this. Our kids only have one kindergarten year, they've only got one eighth grade year and one senior year. And um, just like we don't want to decimate programs by trying to repair our budget all in one swoop and take away from kids. We know we need to move, so where, what do we need to move on within all of the other things coming at? You as a board and the superintendent and then therefore the assistant.
Yeah, yeah, that, that, that is fair. I think the other side about this though, to what degree does the board micromanage the evolution of the courses? And so, and other metrics, so, so the reason for my two metrics. I've done some studies of what kids entering college have in with respect to math. And so that's what leads me to calculus in tenth grade or eleventh grade. So that's, that's from understanding STEM kids. So that's one. And so putting that metric in allows people downstream to achieve that metric. And I don't have to become an expert in math partners. So that's one valuable thing. The other, other one, as we've talked about this room, is a STEM focused degree. So if you're a STEM kid like me, I couldn't play guitar, so I had, had to do that anyway. But I could do math and I could take multiple math courses at the same time, blah, 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 blah. And a STEM focused degree, you have that mindset that STEM is easier and more achievable. And maybe English and social studies is the harder thing. And so thinking about, is our curriculum or are our studies being developed and evolved by people with STEM degrees? Again, allows me to, as a manager, say, okay, it's in the hands of educators and experts. Who have a much better relationship to all this type of work and have blended the two together. Without me having to learn, you know, what education is, what, what to micromanage the, the evolution. So that, that, that would be my.
And, and I think back to policy governance, where that micro management of how we might go about. You know, thinking about course offerings and student access to course and removing barriers. Um, I think that's where it comes in of the board, is you're setting the bar and the expectation. And if you're starting it to your, just to use your, your example, if you're starting it as. How many students are taking ten in calculus in tenth grade in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year? Then that becomes a piece. We've seen districts that say we want to see eighty percent of all our third graders reading proficiently. You know, at some point, this is a similar piece, only you're looking at it differently. It sends a message to us about what we can work on, what barriers we need to look at. And then also thinking about our students and, and what are they saying and, and what are the factors that come into that? But um, having you stay at that um, vision, mission, values and goal setting level. Helps us then to really know what are the banks of the river? And then let us navigate that river with the really talented educators that we have, checking in with you and providing that feedback.
And I think that, um, I, I just happened to pull up Bellevue, like math offerings and they do have a linear algebra. It's at one school, but they associate it with.
And they do have a linear algebra, it's at one school, but they associate it with Bellevue College. So our kids have those opportunities too. So my point in saying that they can get it if they want it, it's there and it's juniors and seniors who have. At least more than ability with transportation. So my point is, you know, we're a public school and we're funded based on student enrollment, so we can only do so much. Maybe we need to do a better job, and I think we do need to do a better job, and I think we have been doing that. I I think that's been recognized, that we need to make sure that our students who have that interest. Know how they can get it, know how they can get credit for it, and know how they can get support from the district in doing it. So when I, I mean, I don't, I'm not saying that anything you're saying is not important and we absolutely should have those offerings for those students. My point is, we need to look at everybody, not just your specific interest, um, but also it's there. It might not be easy to get because I don't think it's that hard to first, so many of our seniors go to Bellevue College. It's right there, and that's kind of all the way, always been the way it's been, because we don't have enough kids to offer it. Now, the state, if they wanna change how they fund our classes, of course, we should offer it here.
I I I didn't say anything about courses, I said we should put in two metrics. I didn't say anything about courses.
I I think those are probably easily as easily ascertainable. I mean, how many kids are are two years ahead? And we know those kids that are two years or I don't. With the calculus.
Uh, how many, how many tenth graders have achieved calculus? How many eleventh graders have achieved calculus?
Baby calculus.
Yeah, and uh, how many teachers have STEM degrees?
And and I would also like, at least for me, like maybe this is adding too much. But like, there's one of the things that's thrown out there all the time is like, we don't wanna like put too many bets to offering these people, like students will fail. And so like, I would like to know, like, the the pathways, like, I mean, are these students like successful in those courses? I think, and you know, I I think that is the main number, and this could be hard to gather or not, but. Just because a district requires all kids to take whatever, doesn't mean that all kids are doing well. And I I think that there's a quarter, and you know, I think that that's that we have to be careful when we just look at. And and so I'm agreeing with you, when we just look at kids taking something. Because we can also say, how many students are going to four-year colleges? But how many graduated four years, five years, six years, and there is that report that we get from some colleges. And then also, how many are going and then choosing to transfer to a different school?
Or or going insane, they're gonna major in engineering, they'll end up majoring in literature, which is tons.
Which is, and I think all of it just being, it's not enough just to, you know, we always say, we don't want kids just to go to college. We want them to thrive in college, we want them to experience it and get it, we want them to not just take a course, but do well in the course. And and um, I think that that's. And and I think where like the rubber hits the road and why it's important. And I did, I had a conversation in uh PTBA advocacy. Um, but anyways, like in terms of math pathways and testing in at the elementary school for middle school and sort of concerns and just wondering like how that looks. And for me as a board member, one of my questions is, are we setting that number correctly? Like, are are we creating an obstacle for students who want to and actually disincentivizing like those students who are preaching? Or are the, are they in place because they serve a good reason? And and I think that those kinds of, that exact kind of question, I think is really helpful. Because then we as a staff can go back and and I can, we can bring forward the lived experience of. You know, what are the different implications that teachers have experienced in terms of kids not just access, but readiness? And preparation and why we've chosen some of those and to make sure it's transparent, again, just like the budget. And what do other districts do, like, you know, those, sure. And and what they might do may not lead to the success, but I think it's. If we don't like necessarily what we're doing, what do we need to do upriver? Or downriver as we're thinking about this, so it really is systemic and 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 this helps us with direction. Or and what I'm not sure about, sorry, go ahead. I I just, if we are, are we gonna make the change now? Are we not going to, you don't review this for another year? So it's not like this metric has to be changed tonight, but if it is important, you know, I just wanna make sure we don't lose sight of that.
Well, let's answer that question first.
Well, and that's actually what I was gonna comment on, was that what you're?
No, I have.
So I I'm not gonna stand in any whose lens way, I think, I think finding out who's taking calculus is, would would take someone about twelve seconds. But I know, so that's fine. Um, I think it's putting the carpe for the horse in terms of like, if we're gonna do a deep dive into what is this math pathway. Um.
That's not a carpe that's gonna hurt anyone.
Like I said, I'm not standing in the way. The STEM thing, in terms of teachers, I don't understand, because I just don't, I don't understand what the purpose is.
Well, it's a number that's not gonna necessarily change your effects over.
I don't know what it means either.
I I don't have any.
I just, I would wanna know just what's the interest, cuz I might be able to get you more important information you may want, is the only thing. And if you're ready tonight, that's that, or we wanna.
No, I think, I think, I think the interest is, um, are we, do we have people thinking about curriculum from a STEM point of view? That that's what it would drive. Right, if you've got, if you've got teachers with STEM backgrounds that can think broader from a STEM point of view. You've got teachers with music backgrounds, you you get a really great music curriculum. If you get Steve teachers with liberal arts background, you get a very great liberal arts uh curriculum.
And David, if you don't have teachers with STEM background, you might need to bring someone in to help with thinking about that. Like, if they're a biology teacher, don't they need to have, especially, I'm in high school, to teach high school science?
Well, and I think that's where this conversation would help to bring Erin and her team with Rosie to kind of explain. How does credentialing work and what does that look like to be able to teach? And and there are some that are emergencies, so because as you're, as you're saying, Director Lurie. Um, you know, there was for a long time as part of the No Child Left Behind. Then there became the, do we have highly qualified teachers teaching different courses? That's been manipulated over time because of teacher shortages or whatnot, but you're interested to know, you know, what what do our teachers bring? What's really interesting on that, that I don't know if we'd be able to show is, you know, we may have an elementary teacher who has a chemist, a chemistry degree. But they have an elementary endorsement, cuz that's what they wanted to do, just like we may have a high school teacher with a biology degree. But so, you know, they're, what they bring to the table, it can be really wide. I was a history major, you know, not a um, you know. Um, you know, not a education major, that wasn't even a thing in my college.
So David, are we asking for a report? Just kind of one-time report or?
No, it would be part of the metrics that would show up next year.
So if it's at the metrics, I I don't like metric, just kind of reporting out, but then are there metrics of like, you know, does it reflect? Kind of uh, the percentage of my credentials really reflect the offering that we have? So because if we're just reporting out, then it was like we have a bad recording, then what are we gonna do with that, right? But are we moving forward for kind of making sure there's alignment of what we offer and having the right credential? But I guess it's like, I agree with that, but how do we, how do we frame it in a way that is not just reporting out and then we're like, oh, that's nice? And then.
Well, we get all these reports for fundamental too today, that tell us how many students took AP courses and all that type of stuff, but it just would be another line in that.
So you just wanna have a report. I kind of like uh more on a little bit higher expectation. In that what do we have and how do we make sure that um our credentialing reflects? Kind of our priority areas, you know, um, so those kind of thing for me, that gives us a goal. Um.
Well, I think what what David was saying, and and if I'm incorrect, is like, for instance, the last board meeting when it came, like, the supplemental information, which was great on. I've diversity for staff and then breaking it down and showing how we compare to other school districts. Um, was enormously helpful, at least for me, to sort of see, um, you know, that. I think, you know, we in many other districts could do better, but you know, the Bellevue, for whatever reason, seems to be doing a particularly good job. In in attracting and retaining uh diverse teachers. And so I think this, you know, it's sort of a similar metric, that when we look at subject areas. You know, what what are the backgrounds of the teachers for those subject areas?
I agree, so the diversity thing, you know, just because of numbers, that's why I don't like it. So but this is forced us to hold anybody accountable ourselves or the superintendent, anybody accountable to kind of, are we gonna hit at least, you know?
Well, at least now it says like where that Bellevue is doing, you know.
For fundamental, maybe we wanna start bringing in our department chairs in the high school to give us an overview of their. Curriculum through the high school and saying whether or not they have any suggestions on where there might be.
I mean.
Well, and they should.
Yeah, I mean, they're doing this all.
I think that's my point.
And it, and I think that's part of what's in the OE ten of of the superintendent. Is all around what's happening in the courses. Um, you want a little bit more um visibility into what that might be. Um, you know, and it might take a while to kind of circulate through some of them.
The issue is we uh wanting to see if the outcomes. What, I mean, the board is all about outcomes, what are the outcomes? And I shouldn't really care how they achieve those outcomes, right? And so that's why the how many kids are achieving calculus in tenth and eleventh grade is an outcome. I think that type of outcome, those kids are prepared to succeed well in the highest and best or whatever. STEM uh curriculum they wanna go into in college. Right, so that's why I'm.
It sounds like there's consensus for that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's the other one that.
And so then this, the STEM, this the STEM uh background for teachers, again, I think is about. Uh, it's about competency in in an area.
But, I mean, they're accredited, I don't know what.
I mean, every everybody teaching a course, I'm I'm sure everybody's accredited. I I don't, I don't have any doubt that we.
When they aren't, we bring you, we have to bring you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Wanting to go ahead with that, that second one, or are you wanting to like? Wait till we've had like a study session and had heard more from HR and looked at maybe some other metrics that could be used.
I'm I'm happy to propose the vote and then HR can come back and tell me. If I can't do it, or we can start the number at zero, and then when we hire people, we increment.
I I have no problem.
I just don't want, I I just want you to be careful as a board that you're not sending a message to your staff, to our staff, that you don't think they're fall apart. That's, that's my one worry when you say, you know, what's that? I I don't know how it's interpreted, and you're the board, um, I'm the superintendent. We're always looking for the very best educators, and if we're concerned about that, I would love to bring to you. How do we make sure that we have the very best in front of you, and then you can ask questions after that, just being transparent. Well, I mean, we look at racial and gender data and, you know, for it's get, for like similar reason to sort of say like, you know, what could we be doing better? But like the first step in terms of attracting is at least understanding what is the profile, right? So like, I I I don't think, I mean, hopefully, like, there's no one takes umbrage by saying just because we wanna understand like what the profile is. And like how we may. That's why I'm, exactly, but that's why I'm asking, what's the interest? So we know what that is, because taken out of context, someone may not to fully understand what your interest is on that. And then it can be seen as, why does the board need to know about all of our credentials? I just want that to be clear for everyone who's watching and and how that looks is, you know, what is that interest? I hear that the interest is, you know, what kinds of credentials do we have amongst our teachers? That are in front of our kids each and every day? I think it would be helpful to know what is the process we go through as a school district as soon as we're looking at hiring. What do we expect in our hiring um process for people to submit in terms of their credentials? Um, it kind of feeds in a little bit to the discussion last week around uh seniority lists. Because even in our seniority list, we have all kinds of different credentials right in there, so what are the different topics? I I just think there's a lot of information to provide you first without.
Yeah, and and I'm not proposing this as one to add right now, but I'm interested in kind of continuing education type STEM. Hours like like I would be, I would hope we would want to be encouraging our staff. Like, I know they're actually required to take a certain number of STEM-related education hours as part of their their continuing ed certification, like every many years, right? So like, it'd be nice to know, like, what, what are they learning? You know, like, that's kind of a a topic I'd be interested in, right? Like, are are this is all teachers across, like, is that true, like?
So anyone with a um, with, who's teaching in a STEM um, uh course. Then they have to take a certain numbers of fifteen credits and. You know. Fifteen credit hour, you know, credits going in your five years. So there are responsibilities around STEM and around kind of equity and social emotional learning. Or principles, there's um and and others, you know, each of us have some things we have to focus on. We have to get a hundred total.
Yeah.
And certain number have to be in certain areas to maintain our credentials.
Which would be something interesting, I think, for me at least, and for the rest of the world to hear a little bit more about at some point. You know, just because like, somebody who's already in the schools teaching STEM courses, they're not gonna go out and get most of the time, like, another degree. They're not gonna go get a master's degree in, you know, teaching math or whatever, if they don't already have one. But this is, this is an area where they can improve their skills and hopefully become better teachers of STEM materials, which is the goal.
Fifteen per, thank you for our staff who's helping me out here, fifteen for uh. I mean, they're, I'm just checking up on them, okay? Fifteen for every elementary teacher, um, and then if you're in other areas in terms of middle school.
Um, not to stir the pot more, but I'm gonna stir the pot a little more and say. Two years ago, I didn't like how this this list was, and I look at even less after this discussion. So I would like to propose that as long as we keep all the items in there that are, you know, part of the state standard, that we reorder the items as follows. Okay, so I'm gonna read it, the how it is now, and then I'm gonna read it how I'm proposing it, okay?
Are you ready to make a motion, just so we can at least capture it that way?
Yes.
Okay.
I I move that we uh that we change the ordering of the the areas in this. Fundamental, okay, right now it says maintain the highest learning standards in the areas of fine arts, health and physical education. English, language, arts, mathematics, financial education, science, environmental and environment and sustainability, social studies. World languages, computer science and educational technology. Okay, my proposal is maintain the highest learning standards in the areas of English, language, arts, mathematics, science, social studies. Computer science, environment and sustainability, financial education, fine arts, health and physical education. World languages and educational technology. And the reason for that order is that I think English and math are at the core of what we teach. And if you can't read, you can't read a word problem, so I'm putting English ahead of math just for that.
So it's in four years required by the state board of.
And it's more years required by the state board, but um and then math, and then science is pretty critical in today's world and also. A lot of, has a lot of requirements associated with graduation. Social studies comes right after that, coincidentally, those things are also alphabetical. And then computer science comes right after that, because that is like a, in my opinion, a basic science and critical for kids to at least be very familiar with. Um, to go out into the working world. Um, and then everything else after that is just alphabetical, but I'm comfortable with the order that that goes into. Environment, sustainability, financial education, fine arts, health and physical education, world languages. And then I slapped on educational technology at the end because that is part of a state description, and I guess it's supposed to be in here. Um, so I I just.
Well, educational technology just means you're learning how to use technology.
I guess, but like.
Be a little overly semantic on this, but I'm actually, I prefer the hodgepodge because I don't want like a hierarchy.
Um, it's alphabetical, though. No, my version is alphabetical.
Oh, but I, like, maybe I would just got, just listening to the explanation about like, sort of. But my perception of it is reordered as a perceived like hierarchy of subjects.
It's like the core subjects.
You have a, first, you have a second on that, you don't.
I can, I agree with both in the ha, I have, I don't want it to be, I I understand the hierarchy, yeah, I know. But I, my my recommendation is to uh do what you need to give, this alphabetizing, yeah, then that's fine.
Alphabetizing.
It's it's alphabetizing.
Setting for.
For purposes of discussion, so it's alphabetical by the core subjects and then it's alphabetical by the kind of what I think of honest is like bonus subjects.
Did you look into why it's the way it is?
No, but from my, from like a legal standpoint, help me out here, you guys, like, as long as we list all the items, I don't think it should matter. Whereas like, to me, it makes us statement, at least that the board feels that the core subjects are important to mention first. And then like, I don't think putting physical education ahead of like science.
Not ahead of, it's just listed in it, it, there's no priority list.
I I know, but I think like.
I think my understanding is that this list is taken directly from the state board of education.
We we, as we add into it, it just got tacked, yeah.
Right, because state board event added it.
Like, computer science is just tapped, yeah.
But I think because that's what state board event did. I as they added it.
Like, financial education actually was related in computer science and it's.
So the, as I recall, I think OSPR's website's been updated. Truth be told, they are now alphabetical, they weren't before. It used to be by year, it used to be by year. It used to be by year, it used to be by year, so you're both correct. Um, but they have updated this because it goes. You know, the years go two thousand seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, eleven, twenty-one, nine. They had OSPI's website had just been adding one. That's why the the order was, it is now alpha on their website.
I just wish.
I'd match that.
For purposes of discussion, I think we should match OSPI.
Apple type everything.
Which is what I thought we had, so if we didn't, then I'm happy with the correct thought.
Yes, I I would look for apple type, yeah, everything. So where's the, can you, but you, can you share how you like the order of OSPI order?
Yeah, sure. Um, Andrea, if you just type in um OSPI learning standards. That's it right there. And then scroll down. And essentially, that's what we have. We don't have in there first the third grade for early learning and those kinds of things. But we have the others, you can kind of see the years. But you see the alpha.
Who's the man?
Mathematics on the right.
Oh, there's some to call ups, I see.
I think alphabetical makes.
Everything.
Sure.
Because that's a clear order. There's no priority. There's none.
So let's, we have a motion that we're going to.
So are we modifying? I'm happy, can I modify my motion then to say we'll adopt the OSPI? Order. But leaving out the items that we don't have, which which means. Arts, it would be arts, computer science. Educational technology, English language arts, we wouldn't separately list out English language professional since we don't now, environment and sustainability, financial education, health and PE. Mathematics, science. Social studies and world languages.
Let me just put something. Okay, sorry to interrupt you, put on the consent agenda, ju- just because it's like.
Sure.
Uh, I would just like and then just to see if there's any questions we can have for discussion like.
For next time.
For next time.
Great.
Thank you. I'll I'll send that list.
And then um what about the stat around um calculus? And STEM teachers.
I moved that we add that to the monitoring.
So can we? You thought it was separate?
I I'm clear about your. Your first element is I'm clear about calculus, but not clear what we'd be adding for the teacher component. So that might need more specificity as you go through.
My 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 thought was is it uh in sort of bachelor of arts degrees and a bachelor of science degree. Very basic.
I'll look at that, that that after them somewhat on, like my wife, like majored in mathematics at the liberal arts college over there.
Yeah, okay, I guess.
No, no, like I like I like I'm right, like.
It is, that would be mad, yeah, that would be mad.
That's why I just don't understand the purpose of that.
So STEM subjects. A bachelor is in one of the STEM subjects.
But then after we want to know how many have music degrees and how many have other, because I don't understand.
Only because we feel comfortable. With those programs. I mean, I do you want to go change our music program? Yeah, I'm I'm not.
No, but I, none of us are creating that curriculum. I just don't understand. I don't understand the purpose of it.
I just want to know if the curriculum is being created by people with uh with.
No, so of our teachers who are teaching STEM and you have there. You're wondering about their credentials, not all the credentials, because you might have a teacher who's teaching orchestra. Who could have a math degree, but that's not what you're as interested in.
Um, you know, it's, I think it's okay. I I wouldn't mind counting that. I mean, we've we've got. We've got technology infusing into so many things, right? Though we have digital music classes, we've got digital art classes.
Uh, what what would it say, Director De Souza, just as I'm just kind of thinking this? What does it say that your superintendent has a history degree? And then I have a master's in, well, you know. Think of my, you know, I have a master's in policy, a a doctorate in something else. I do not have a STEM degree. So what what would I, what should I think about as your superintendent if you're only looking for STEM?
And yet you ran learning services for how many years?
And 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 I'm not worried about mine, but I'm just thinking about our staff who doesn't have that. What are we saying about that?
It's the same thing as we say, how many people have taken uh physics AP courses or computer science AP courses or whatever. It says the same thing as that. What 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 is that? That doesn't mean it's who didn't take physics AP are bad. It's just a number. Right? Who 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 has an interest in this? I'm, we're assuming that today when we come in. Everybody has a a has a degree of some sort, an education degree. But that's the assumption.
What they have to do to get.
Yeah.
Everyone has to have will be a to be.
Yeah, everyone has to have that. So the so the 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 interest right now is. Is what what's our STEM capacity, because everyone else has. I mean, we we by default for this. It's just like um on a diversity report, I don't know if we track how many Caucasians there are, we're tracking all the other races.
No, we we track that. But. I I'm just.
I mean, then then another number would be how many people have a degree, which is.
That's everybody, yeah.
So what, but go ahead.
So what I'm here, it's like, so so if we ask specifically for STEM, that means that we have identified that maybe our chicken kind of priority. And then we're gonna focus on that and we're maybe.
Uh, actually, no, because it's a big, long list of metrics that we have, right?
That's all, but but then if we're just kind of uh make so that it doesn't feel targeted. I wouldn't mind to understand kind of like kind of similar to about what I said. Kind of do we have like expertise and um just understanding, but what what is the connection, right? So maybe look at as a whole, I think sometimes if you look at just like a group of folks. It might seem targeted and the web thread is saying like, what is the purpose? If the purpose is for us to grow that area and we want more. Uh, but I think we have to kind of have that first to say, hey, this is the area we want to grow and we want to make sure that we have more. Uh, folks with credential and this to grow this area versus what right now that we're just coming in to ask. It would seem kind of targeted. I kind of, I I wouldn't mind talking about like wanting to grow the STEM area.
Well, we don't know. I I mean, unless unless I know this number. We don't know if we've got, we've got a lack of STEM or uh. Too little or too much, we don't know, right? I mean, I I won't, I won't say it's just. Without knowing the basics.
I I can tell you as your superintendent that there. Every teacher who was part of the selection of the math texts. All came out of the math department. They all have math degrees. These are people, you know. A former board member was on the committee who taught math at the U and and so. Um, we do make a concerted effort to make sure that the people who are making decisions. About curriculum, designing courses, that they do have the appropriate credentials. I I will tell you that, and I think that that is extremely important to the integrity of the teaching. Now. I have had a different conversation, Director Laurie and I were having a great conversation around um CTE. And that is a more challenging avenue for all of us in education right now because of the industry experience that's needed. But yet, how do we get those people in when we are only offering a point two or a point four? Um, sometimes it's like Joe Bryan, who comes in willing to take a lesser, builds the program, all of a sudden he's full time. Yeah, um, but that's a, that's one that's a little trickier is the CTE one.
And we we track that too, right? I mean, we always.
We track that, but we don't look to see what. Experience our teachers teaching CTE classes have that are relevant to the industry.
We we bring.
I mean, I'm for HR no fun.
And we bring um out out of it, so we have out of endorsement list and then we also have to. Maintain anyone who's getting basically kind of an emergency credential in order to teach CTE. That's a report that all goes into. Our Perkins Grant reporting and everything going to the state to maintain certification there.
Okay, so I will, I mean, I'm I'm sensing a. Trepidation around the STEM degree thing, so I'm happy to withdraw it and we'll just do the one on. Uh, tenth graders and eleventh graders during, uh, so I move that. We include this part of our metrics, the number of tenth graders and number of eleventh graders who have taken uh calculus AP.
Second.
Thank you, and uh all in favor?
Aye.
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 At most. So that also costs. And we can add this at the end as well, yeah. This is a discussion. Okay, sorry, thank you. Um. Yeah, should we seven o'clock? Let's come back seven oh one, let's come back at seven oh six.
Thank you. How about we do ten, just because five is.
Okay, seven, let's come back at seven ten. Thank you.
Let's see, let's get this episode rolling again. Um. Okay, we we are back from recess uh and. Let's move on to item two D, financial administration approval of the high cap program growth plan I grant. Great, so uh each year, there are a couple of I grants that we bring forward to you. Um, the TBIP, the Transitional Bilingual Instructional Program is one. Um, and the high cap is another example. These are requirements by OSPI in order to access our school apportionment. I fully know and and what I have appreciated. Great, so each year there are a couple of I grants that we bring forward to you. The TBIP, the Transitional Bilingual Instructional Program is one. And the high cap is another example. These are requirements by OSPI in order to access our school apportionment. I fully know and what I have appreciated about being part of this governance team is that we continue to commit to the no surprises and we've already had conversations around this. So I know that there's concern about certain elements of this that Director Loitz and I have talked about. So the the report tonight is what does the grant look like that we have to complete? And then the vote for you is whether or not you approve of how we've completed the grant. The grant has been submitted to OSPI, they're they've signed off. They're waiting for your approval as a board as the last step. I fully understand where different beliefs are around this and and so as as the superintendent, I'm not here to stand in the way, but that's the context of what we're doing and what we're seeking.
Can you can you say what is it that this application would get us and or not get?
I'm gonna turn right over to our learning services side who are at the front of this.
A hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. And which is five percent worth funded for um high cap at five percent of our total population. So it has nothing to do, that doesn't dictate in every way with that number, isn't the number we're aiming to qualify or provide services for. That's just the funding model, so it's five percent, it's a hundred and thirty six thousand dollars.
Well, I only get five percent whether they're two percent or twelve percent correct.
And and to be clear, like the Washington Administrative Program, just three nine two one seventy oh two five. It's not whether the board approves of the grant, it's whether it approves of the program, the program, which which is of perhaps, you know, a prerequisite, although it doesn't explicitly say what happens if the board. But it's not saying that the board approves or disapproves of highly capable, you know, program. It's whether the board thinks that the program satisfies its obligation. Right, and the grant is OSPI's attempt to gather from all two hundred and ninety five districts what the program looks like, what you do offer, and is it compliant? And and does it meet that? That's different than whether or not you as a board believe that the program is what you would want it to be in order for us to apply. So absolutely would not disagree with that. So why don't I turn it over to our learning services team with Director Prescott? Director Wood, just to talk through what's in the grant. Take questions on that and then you can have a discussion. We'll answer questions about what isn't enough, what is enough, and then you can move to vote if you so choose.
Great. Andrew, so if you could scroll down, the first few pages are are basic. I know you had this in your board packet, but it's contact information. It's saying we want to agree, we agree to comply with the RCWs and WAPS. And as outlined, and that we're wanting to accept them. So that's the first few pages. If we scroll down, keep going. So here it's, we check a box. One is that we use the state's definition or we use a unique definition that integrates elements of the state's definitions. We went through four or five years ago, a process of really trying to separate the idea of academically talented, high cap and gifted. And we did several activities as an advisory group, and we really weren't going to reach consensus. And so we opted to stay with the state's definition because different people came with different lenses. And ultimately, we are charged with, we have to meet at least the state's definition of highly capable. And so we stuck with that definition, so that box is checked. And then you keep going. And so here is where we have to do things like publicly notify. We have to have assurances that we have a process that's outlined in policy and procedure. We have to get permission in order to test a student. And we have to get permission that a parent or family agrees for the services to be provided. Then there's things that you have to include as far as permission to test, what that can include, what the permission you start services includes. And then we get into the part about screening, assessment, identification. And so if you look at the screen process, we have a documented screening process. And we only screen in K one and two for primary enrichment services. So that's the only place that we give a screener. It's given universally to all kindergartners. And here is what we're given by the state, like these are the things that they have identified as the assessments that are used for the screening process. And so if you look through, there's cognitive, there are academic, there's creativity, there's rating scales and informal measures. So when we do a screener specifically for primary enrichment, and we use the COGAT. What's listed in what's provided from the state is the older versions of the COGAT. We use the most current version in form of both the COGAT and Iowa when we administer the assessments. So when we look at the the primary enrichment screening, we are specifically looking at COGAT. We don't look at other measures, that is our screener. And then students who score in the ninety seventh percentile or higher nationally move on. And then they do what we call portfolio review. In that portfolio review process, they take Iowa assessments specifically in MAP because that's the area targeted for our primary enrichment services. We also have teachers who then complete a gifted rating scale, which goes through, I don't know, eighty to ninety different characteristics and traits of students who are potentially identified as gifted. We also look at their AIMS web scores and now their benchmark data and the try to get an idea of students who would be best served through primary enrichment services. That information goes to a multidisciplinary review committee. They look at the student's whole portfolio and make determinations of qualification. So that is, that's the screener part, and we'll spend a little more time talking about the the full assessment process. When we look at the assessment process, and again, there are one, two, three, four, five different areas that that the state was looking for us to assess in as possibilities. We're not mandated to do all five, but we can choose to do them. There, it's recommended that we use the assessments that are listed here. You'll notice that some of them listed like under cognition. Some of those require individual one to one, one to one assessments done by licensed psychologists. So some of these, as a public school district, are cost prohibitive to be able to administer one to one universally to to all students. And so we've opted and have for years use use the COGAT. You'll notice that I included it under other because, oh, I'm sorry, not in this one. Because they did put COGAT eight on here. So COGAT eight is the newest form that that is provided, and we use that across the board. So from second grade on, as we're talking about highly capable services, we use the COGAT. And as far as academic achievement, we could use things like state assessments. We have opted to use the Iowa assessments. This is a little bit dated because it's no longer called ITBS. And it is now Iowa assessments, but we use the Iowa K twelve. So after a student in K two meets the screener criteria, they take the Iowa and then all students in two through eleven who are testing, take the Iowa as well. Additionally, in under creativity, this was something that we added a few years ago. And this was something that we talked about, we were, we were identifying lots of students who had were high academic achievers. But there wasn't an element that we were assessing for creativity and creative thinking. And so we researched several different assessments, the one that we landed on happened to be the one that the state identifies. So we use the torrents in grades. Well, they take it in second grade, but it's for identification in third through twelve. And as far as research-based rating scales, we only use that for primary enrichment. And if you think about like right now, we have six hundred and sixty students testing for highly capable this month. And so asking teachers to take each of each of those reading scales takes, you know, at least thirty minutes to really go through because you have to go through the process of the training of understanding what it is you're assessing. Then you go through and individually score every student on those eighty to ninety different characteristics and traits. And and so doing that for six hundred and sixty six, six hundred and sixty students would also be time prohibitive and cost prohibitive. And so that's why we only do it at the primary grade levels. And and then for informal measures, when all the data comes in, that data that is given to our multidisciplinary committee, they review the data as I shared last year, I believe. One of the things that the committee then does, as we're looking towards equity and students with different profiles and backgrounds, is we pull specifically students whose home language is something other than English. And when a student, we do an extra pass for any student whose home language is identified as something other than English to ensure that we aren't, we don't have bias in the data specific to home language. And we dig into other assessments, we work with teachers and and pull information to really try to get a full idea of the students' needs and abilities and not, we don't use cut scores. So that's another kind of misnomer. When we are looking at whether or not a student qualifies, we use a matrix. And it's a detailed matrix that pulls both academic achievement, cognitive aptitude. It now includes the torrents and the creative thinking and science. So that was the other addition that we added with part of the academic piece. The committee then convenes, they review all of the information, the scores, the different profiles, and they make initial determinations. Information goes out to families and then there is an appeal process for those who don't reach their scores on the matrix to qualify. If you go to, keep going, Andrew. So if you recall, right here under the primary structures. So prior to this year, we had three of the four primary structures. And we have added the fourth primary structure, which is the inclusion of offering services within a general education setting. For instance, this year it's in grade three and then it will roll up. So we have opportunities and services provided in Gen Ed. We have, we have them in unique high cap classrooms. We have acceleration services, that's really what you see at some somewhat in middle school and then in high school. And then we have non-traditional services. And the best example of that is DI and the number of students we have who participate in Despation Imagination, which is a part of the school day, but it's an extracurricular activity that's supported by the district. The next section really talks about ways like instructional strategies and curricular modifications that are done to support high cap learning and high cap services. And so we checked those things that we do on a very regular basis to provide those services. That's not to say that a student couldn't couldn't participate in an independent project or complete an independent study. It doesn't mean that's not happening. It just means we can't guarantee that that is being offered in every case. And that would be more of an individual differentiated opportunity for students. So as you look through what we offer in the different service areas, right? Those four modalities, whether it's Gen Ed, Gen Ed classroom, high cap classroom, DI and acceleration. Those are the strategies and modifications that our staff make to provide those services. They're the same under each of the different categories. And and then the last bit is, you know, how do you, how do we monitor and measure? Are we doing things? You'll notice we list out what what the options are. So we have district policy, we have a budget and and how we spend that budget. We agree that we comply, that we've got procedures. So we we check those. And you know, you noted, or I know that we have adequate thirty two services for the variety of services at grade levels for grade three, and then we're rolling it up each year. As far as evaluation, one of the things that we heard last year and even several years ago, we were talking about adding the code thirty two services, those Gen Ed services within the classroom, was how are we going to know whether or not it's effective? And so this February, we'll begin the the process now that students and families have been there in high school. It's it's not as significant, it's really in the elementary levels, but it's looking at how are things going for those students who are receiving code thirty two services? How is it going for students? How is it going for teachers? How is it going for families? And so we will be putting out a survey gathering information and feedback about how it's going and how we can improve. As you heard, the elementary instructional coaches talking tonight, one of the things they did that they didn't spend a lot of time on was this creation of a third grade handbook, really as Chris talked about, being able to enrich and extend in every single classroom. It didn't have to occur only in code thirty three classrooms. And so that's one of the things that we've done, but we want to check in and see how has that resource and service and partnership that she's had with teachers been able to support students and what more might be needed if if we're not there yet.
So I I meant to ask her about that because on the inclusionary practices group that I've been participating in, she's talked a lot about it, it's really amazing. So with the third grade, they, what she's done all year is look at the math standards and then actually create assignments for, you know, at at both ends, so the extended, the kids that need the extension. So teachers, when they feel like there's a need for a student, they just, it's already there. They can go in and get that information or that teaching so that that and it's accessible to everybody. So, sorry, it's just, that's great.
And embedded in the curriculum, they have access to some of that too. So you've got two places to go for that.
Additionally, one of the things that now that we have I ready and it's on boarded and we've got what are you, how many benchmark assessments or diagnostic assessments? No, but I just the other day, we're looking at, we pulled the data, we pulled COGAT scores in quantitative reasoning. We pulled their Iowa math scores, we pulled their diagnostic scores along with the details, the strand data as to within those, which of the four math practices where they were scoring out on grade level? Were they on grade level? Were they ahead? Were they grade levels ahead? And then we looked at high cap identification and which of those students, did we miss somebody? Is there somebody that we overlooked? Is there something that data that's out there that is giving us information about other kids? Every single kid who's currently qualified for receiving high cap services is is doing well. And they're either at grade level or near the end of grade level. I think eleven of them had two or more areas where they were slightly above grade level. Eleven of them had two or more areas in which they were mid-range or below grade level in those four areas on the I on the I ready diagnostic. And there were three students who emerged as doing, performing really well on the I ready who were, who didn't, didn't qualify for high cap services. But now I'm going to go back and do a deeper dive and figure out, is it because these students are new to us? They came after testing had occurred and they didn't test in the fall? Is it because they they came, so new students? Is it that they just suddenly they blossomed and they're they're doing really well now and they didn't? Perhaps there are students who's going to want to retest and pursue high cap going forward. So there's only three of the entire, we were looking at third graders of the entire third grade class. There were three that would that look like outliers that I want to go back to. But for the most part, the data aligned and really supported the process that's in place and making sure that we're identifying our district's most highly capable students.
And I think the other thing that as we look at the growth data coming back from I ready and kind of going into look at those things, one of the things I'm excited about, Chris and I started looking at it on Tuesday, I think. Not all classes are done just yet, but as we look at that growth data, we can see if they've made annual typical growth or stretch growth, as they call it. And I already in stretch growth is that they would go above and beyond what is expected of a student who scores in that ranking. So looking at that data, even at looking at those high cap students, we're seeing it at minimum a year's worth of growth trajectory anticipated in our end of year. So we can target down to the student in terms of whether or not they're having a year's worth of growth in their current model as they're engaging in process.
Ask the question, going back to like the, where you have the grid and you show them what grade, different assessments are for, like, like the TTCT, like I just thought is like third grade through twelfth grade, but we wouldn't be using it with older kids, right? Like, there's no reason why we would.
So we're using that as to to gather some longitudinal data and to track over time how students are doing. And so that also, I think this was last year as well. I talked about sharing with teachers more information. So just because a student doesn't qualify for services based on their matrix scores doesn't mean that they don't have unique characteristics, right? So I think last year, one of the things I shared is, we have a couple of students who didn't qualify for any services, but they were scoring like ninety seventh, ninety eighth, ninety ninth percentile on the torrents. So creatively, they're they're thinking differently. And so we want that in the hands of teachers regardless of grade level, right? We're not providing direct support, but I think that's a great data point for a teacher to say, okay, I'm I'm having trouble reaching this student, I'm looking at their academic profile. Academically, looks like, you know, they've remained similar performance level for several years.
And they, so a parent could nominate their ninth grader, even though high cap qualification services are different in high school. So anyone could nominate their child going up really through eleventh grade, I should go into twelfth grade.
As the the report ends, you know, it's making sure like, do we use multiple data points to identify students? Um do we use national norms? Like, we have to affirm that. Um and then one of the last things we need to do is identify the number of stu- students served in our program. Um Andrew, if you could open the other attachment, um because it shows. Just to see over time, so these are, I excluded um. Participation in code thirty five services, right, which is DI. Uh many of those students are, are duplicates. Of students already receiving services, some are not though, but um because the, these are the students that we identify, DI is something that is self-select. So a student can choose to participate. Um this is for students in grades three through twelve. It's unduplicated high cap enrollments by grade level for this current school year. And so if you look um total for our overall, this is out of August or November twenty twenty two. Um the percent enrolled as a district is seventeen percent.
This includes, uh I'm sorry, looking at some other numbers, this includes a student who participates and a destination manager.
It does not, yeah. So this is exclusive of code thirty five. So these are students who are identified through the identification process to receive services, whereas DI is self-select.
And how many appeals do we get that end up getting rejected?
I do not have that number off the top of my head.
And how many appeals do we have that get put in?
Like the people appeal? Bridge sixty or so. If I had to estimate.
About ten percent. Yeah, a little bit less than ten percent, yeah.
So code thirty three is unique classroom. And code thirty two is what we added this year where you don't have to qualify holistically to receive services if you are. Advanced in math and and that's your area that you need additional support in to move beyond. Um. That can be served in the general classroom, same goes with reading literacy. So you could do one or the other and still receive.
Is, Steve, when you say unique classroom, thirty four is like.
Thirty four is like AP honors. Lit um honors G O. Um so if you look um just at our our cohorts over time, I think there was the perception that. Um like we were cutting numbers and we were, we were not identifying students. And if you look. Um you know, as a district, we're, we're at seventeen percent when we did the study in twenty eighteen. The feedback we got was at sixteen percent, we were over identifying. Um we didn't go in with the, the outcome or the desired outcome of reducing that number or setting a bar of like, well, we're only going to qualify. Twelve percent or five percent because that's what we're funded at. Um.
It's the funding, but the funding goes for the testing, not for the percentage, it's. I can send you.
It helps support stuff, but it'd go further.
Well, we'll continue the conversation about the buyer.
So, well, if I look at the grant, uh right here, it says the highly capable funding formula is based on five percent of each LEA's population. This is a funding formula and does not mean a certain percentage of students must be defined. That's what I'm saying. I'm just saying, when we went into it in twenty eighteen. We didn't go in to say, all right, the, the report says we're over identifying at sixteen percent. We want it to be twelve percent, we want it to be five, we didn't give a number. We said, we need to make sure that we are identifying our most highly capable students and. What other measures might we need to take a look at to make sure that we're doing that? That's where we added the addition of the torrents. And that's where we added science as an area as well that we assess because when, when students get to middle school. That is an area of um code thirty three service delivery.
And I think the five percent is a small number because highly capable education is still part of the basic. It's not intended to fund the whole thing. Well, because like really the, the cost of providing more accelerated courses is just the testing. For it, which is pretty minimal.
No, there's extra training.
There's staff.
There's curriculum.
Some of the classrooms, sorry, we could do an analysis, but some of the classroom sizes like a Lakridge are higher than. The average student body population and that grade, I think, in some of these combined courses. So, I mean, it would be less expensive on a per student basis. For like certain, looking at the code thirty three in the elementary, like those class sizes are hard. So it's actually less expensive to teach those students.
Yeah, I mean, that's the, not part of anything that I'm presenting, I'm just.
Five percent is just like. Really has nothing to do with anything.
Oh, it'd be great to have in a district like ours that. Ends to have more, it'd be great to have more funding, just like we could use more special ed funding, we don't get it.
But the funding is for just the screening, it's not.
And a, an added cost that's associated with highly capable education is in third grade, Heather McLeibman is teaching iReady. Her ta- she's been tasked with using both third and fourth grade to fill gaps for students in their learning because what we know about kids is that they're not going to come in. And just automatically be able to transition to fourth grade math without some of that skill building that's going to get them to those standards. So she has to do both of those things. What that means is I have to purchase both third and fourth grade for her. So that's an added cost that's not just associated with testing is what I'm saying.
Additionally, we provided um high cap curriculum to all third grade teachers, right? So instead of saying that curriculum is only available in certain classrooms, those things that were supplemental that were provided exclusively to code thirty three classrooms previously. We purchased for all third grade classrooms so that any classroom that has a student receiving code thirty two services, and to be honest, any student who needs it. Has access, the teacher has access to those materials. Um so this, this slide is just to show. Um although we were told in twenty eighteen that we were potentially over identifying students um after.
Who said this was the?
We didn't center for educational.
The same one that did the report on high cap from twenty eighteen, okay, thank you.
Yep. Uh so we didn't go in with a preconceived notion as to a, a target number, we really want to make sure we're identifying students who, who need services. And so um as you can see, we, we're, this year we're at twenty one percent. So we, we've increased in percentage. Um and as a district, we're still, we're a percentage above where we were at that point. That's not to say that I think we are. Uh over identifying, I'm not saying that at all, I'm just saying, these are, these are the numbers. Um and um. I think a, a benefit to the shifts that we've made uh are that students who are not. Able to qualify in both reading and math, um they're not, uh they're not excluded from receiving services. That a student is able to receive those services.
Um I think they're also highlighted, right? So like the recognition that we're using that data to impact student learning, I think is what's important, right? So whether they have a label or not is not what's important, but rather that the teacher knows, okay, these students might be ready for a greater deal of jobs. So I'm going to plan accordingly and instruct them as such.
I don't, I don't know if they're, I, I'd be curious to know um for our, especially high school, but middle school too. Because, well, I don't know how many options they have for honors in middle school.
They don't, the way that they do high cap is similar, similar-ish, it's like a mixture of middle and high.
Yeah, they're assigned to specific.
So math, well, so in the middle school, goes to code thirty four, right? So that's acceleration. Um high cap services for code thirty three students in the middle school is they take English, language arts and science, right? Those are their homogenous classes.
So my question though is for high school. It's self, so, I mean, self-selecting, so anyone can take an AP class or an honors class. If, I mean, obviously if they have the, the um prerequisites. So how many of these kids? Are actually taking advantage of that? Because I know that obviously the numbers who are taking them are a lot higher than this. Um but of the actual identified high cap, is that a statistic that we?
We could, we could run it. Um what happens in, in part of the service model at the high school level is students who are. When they go to register, um there is a real intentionality by the counselor. They see the students who are flagged as high cap and they look at their course registration and they'll say. Hey, you've been in, you've been in high cap for two years, five years, um but you enroll, you haven't enrolled in any um advanced coursework. You know, is there something that has changed? And it might be that the student is, you know, they're at P and B all day and, and they, you know, that's where their passion is right now. It might be that they say, oh, I didn't realize that, I thought I clicked that button in Skyward. Yes, I really have a capability towards. Uh math and sciences, I want to be doubling up in science this year. And the counselor that is working to replicate the student to ensure that they've selected courses that will meet the rigor that they have had along the way.
Any other thoughts?
Yeah, so I mean, I'm, I'm glad that we used the state definition for highly capable. Um which is students who perform or show potential for performing at significantly advanced academic levels when compared with others of their age, experience. Or environments. Outstanding abilities are seen within student general intellectual aptitudes. Specific academic abilities and our creative productivities within a specific domain. These students are present not only in the general populace, but are present within all protected classes. Um no mention of, you know, of giftedness, I mean, in terms of like definitionally, I mean, that's, that's the definition. Um and I guess, you know, there's two things, right? It's a highly capable. Um one is appropriate screening. Um part of that, uh which was updated in twenty nineteen, which sounds like after we last updated our screening. Is that local norms can be no more restrictive than national norms. When you have, I've seen in previous board meetings that one quarter of our second graders. Are at the ninety seventh percentile um in reading and math, like not necessarily one quarter in both those domains, but in one of those. And I think when you have a district like ours, there's a question, because it's about, at the end of the day, providing an appropriate education. To every student that would benefit, whether that's one percent, five percent or fifty percent. In the same way, when it comes to, to students in other places of the spectrum, it's not a set number. It's not you're any most one of these or that, it's who would benefit from a different pathway, from different curriculum. Um so that's the screening question and, and I have not seen evidence from my perspective that we've thought meaningfully. Of what local norms being no more restrictive than national norms means. And what, you know, what students do show the, the capability. Of performing at significantly advanced academic levels. Um so that's the first is the screening question.
Then just because that, that might, we might need to start there and then hold the second one. So is the question. Um how are, how are we contemplating local norms versus national norms when we're looking at individual students? And whether or not they benefit from highly capable services?
Well, I, I, I recognize we look at national norms of the ninety seventh percentile, which, I mean, if you look at stain on and standard deviations. Usually the top six percent is the cutoff of the statistically significant standard of deviation. Um so like, yes, like one, there's, and then two, like you say, you can say ninety seven percentile. But once you layer on, well, ninety seventh percentile, but you know, you got to average that across multiple tests. There's a question of, well, are we discriminating or harming those students who are twice exceptional? Who like maybe do really well in one test, but like just don't have the ability, you know, to consistently. Uh you do well across multiple tests. I mean, the. I mean, to use an analogy, when you look at like the top decapulees, right? They're not nearly as good in any specific sport is like those that are in the best of their sports. Once you layer on additional hurdles and they are alternative qualifying mechanisms, but cumulative. And particularly the torrents test for creativity, like it's not an additive, you know, like. You either do really, really well in this and this, you know, or this. Um but it's when running through the matrix, if you do very poorly on the torrents test, which seems to have. No correlation that I've seen to the other test, you know, what used to be the ITSB and is now the Iowa test or the COGAT. I mean, it raises flags and it's really the only test as far as I'm aware. Um that uses, that tries to quantify uh creativity. And I don't know how Champs would have done this ready-made toilet for creativity. Um but I mean, that's perhaps like a different discussion. Uh but yes, like.
So how do we use those tests?
Again, like with the end goal of, we're testing for what students would benefit. Not a set number, not a set percentage and not making it our most, you know, accelerated students. Because if we say starts in our, then that looks like our norms are more restrictive than national norms. And that's pretty clearly not permissible um under like the Washington Administrative Code, but again, it was updated in twenty nineteen. And I mean, I don't think our district is taking that seriously. I don't think many districts frankly have. And perhaps Lake Washington is an exception, which seems to be greatly expanding their offerings. And then two, which I think is really like immediate, because there's a lot of focus, which is important, it's screening at the elementary school level. But it's then what's the substance and how does that track? From when students, you know, enter our, our school district to when they leave. And my concern is that we have twenty five percent taking a domain like math, which is easier to track. I mean, just because. English and languages is, is more difficult to sort of, you know, quantify. We have one quarter that are in the top three percent nationally in second grade for aptitude by COGAT. Yet in our fifth grade, highly capable classroom, the standard textbook is one grade level above standard. I mean, I would think that would be what our standard would be and, and courses. And then, you know, sort of tying into an earlier conversation, we look at where's our accelerated math offerings by the end of the high school? And it's like, well, we don't really have them, but you can go to third parts, like that provider. Um so the question is, what's the substance, you know, for these pathways? And then also like, you know, where's the evidence that the code thirty two? And the, the push-in is actually accomplishing what it reports to do because anecdotally, from what I've heard. And from what I've seen, when this was rolled out at the elementary level for first and second grade, is not much. So why don't we start with um, maybe we work backward? Maybe we were start with there because maybe what I had heard around how are we measuring how students are doing. I don't know if you were getting at that when you were talking about our iReady and how our kids are performing and then checking in with surveys with parents. Granted, this is our first year, so we don't know the exact effectiveness, but what are we, let's just reiterate what we are.
Can I just, I want to jump in about sort of the progress of kids. So when we think about Heather's class, for example, right? So if the assumption that we have is that those students are ready for fourth grade standards in September. My belief would be that our typical growth, annual growth would have already been reached for all of those children, which is not true. Half of them have reached their typical growth. And then when we look at a stretch growth, even fewer, about half. So when we're looking at other data points, which not just to look at that Iowa.
Like, right? If you have an athlete that's performing at a level and they're never taught more demanding skills. Like you can have a very like capable athlete that you see zero growth in. Like it doesn't mean they're not capable.
I'm not, I don't, I'm not sure you're quite here.
So part of what, what, the difference, right? So we've got the nationally normed assessment of the Iowa, right? So if we're sticking with math, we have, that's a nationally normed assessment. But when we talk about iReady data and where we're triangulating data to look to see how does, how a student is performing on the Iowa. Align with iReady, iReady is actually looking at standards. So it's now looking at third and fourth grade standards, if we're using Heather McLeibman's class as an example. She's working on third and fourth grade standards. When the students take that diagnostic, we're receiving information that is way more than just. The nationally normed test of the Iowa, right? That's how they're doing against their peers, not how they're doing against standards. And so we have to make sure, like, that's where we're bringing in this other data point to say, are, is this aligning? Are we seeing this? Because what you'll see, if you were to see the iReady diagnostic data, is that students who qualified. Only, only a few of them are advanced in three areas. I think there's only one. Who in our district identified for math services this year. It has three, not, no single student is advanced in a grade level in all four domains of standards. And so it, I think sometimes we get caught up in like, we are only using this assessment, just like, you know, it's ninety seventh percentile. We're looking at a variety, I think that's part of the work of our multidisciplinary committee, is we don't have a cut score with the exception of the screener. Which we then have other means to, to look through. Um or pass, but we're talking about high cap and homogenous classroom grouping versus services within a gen ed classroom. We're, we're really looking at a variety of different things and there isn't, just because a student doesn't score on the ninety seven percentile or something. Students can score in the, the ninety second percentile and still qualify based on their cognitive aptitude. And, and then we're looking at that in conjunction now with the iReady data, which is standards-based, not based on. How their peers are performing nationally. And so I want to make sure we're understanding, it's not. And so I want to make sure we're understanding, it's not just that they're ready because they're against their peers, they're ready. They also have to be ready based on the content of the standards established.
So you're saying that students that do well compared to their peers nationally still may not be that exceptional in substantive knowledge, for whatever reason. I mean, it could be like, they just can't learn that much, like, right? Or like, it could also be that not enough is being taught in classrooms.
Or they haven't been exposed to it.
Yeah.
It has not been explicitly taught, right? So if you're taking a normed assessment, you're performing at a higher rate than peers nationally. That still doesn't mean that you've been exposed to the standards. It means you might, you might have a greater aptitude and a proclivity to be able to then move at that quicker standard, which is then why we identify those services and provide those in the classroom.
Well, but I mean, I guess my question is, I mean, it seems actually even deeper, is if you have large percentages of students with high aptitude, but actually not that much, like some sort of knowledge, because they haven't been taught it, then to me, that asks the question like, well, why aren't they learning more and being exposed to greater um, in the classroom than they are? I mean, or at least the team would beg that question, rather than saying, well, like.
And I think that is also fundamental to all the work the elementary team did last year with the new adoption. Because I think that's, I mean, in K two, we'll start eye-ready next year. But I think that was part of the shortcomings of math expressions, is it did not have a lot of flexibility in terms of what students could do. And I, I, you know, kind of going back to that whole adoption process is recognizing that exact phenomenon that can happen. We all know in our literacy classrooms, it's a lot easier potentially to, you know, scale up, scale down. Mathematics, if you're not careful, can get very silent. And I think that's what we're trying to do differently. And what I'm interested in as we do our, our screening, not for High Cap, but in our general screening, um, here with the, the measures coming up, or how are those students doing? Who we have identified, and then how are students doing who we haven't identified? And I think you're starting to point that out, where we're catching some students who maybe we didn't identify. And I think that's back to your point, Director Bullock, which is, you know, are they our most highly capable or not, or whatnot? Maybe that doesn't matter at the end of the day as much as who can benefit from even more. And if we've got three kids who we didn't code correctly, label or not, how do we help them? And I, you know, and I think that's got to be part of the, the, the thinking.
But I want to be clear, like, it was three kids, right? Like of the, out of the entire grade. It, it's not like we had hundreds of students and, oh my gosh, this is pointing out something, a massive flaw in our system. What it's doing is confirming, our, our process is working to identify students who benefit from this service and who need it. And look, there is this small group, how might we work to capture them in this next round? Right? As we just finished testing, um, second graders universally this month. How might we make sure that we have an end of zero that next year at this time, we're not saying, oh, how do, how do we not get those three?
I feel like, um, just since we've been looking at fundamentals tonight, like I feel like what you're describing and the use of the data, even in kids that don't qualify for like the specific programs, um, it gets to that like fundamental one. Create a personalized learning environment where differentiated instruction, instruction, student-centered education and varied learning opportunities, blah, blah, blah. You know, it's about being responsive, it's about figuring out like, we know this about this kid now, like how can we serve them better?
Yeah, and as Lee's pointed out tonight, like the ability with it, and I'm sticking just to math, because it seems to be the topic of the night, um. But we can see strands data, we can see gaps and areas specifically where they're excelling, where they need enrichment or depth, or areas that they need some backfill and some additional support. And I think that's something, that's data that we haven't had before, right? We've, we've heard, but I, I want my student to accelerate, right? But sometimes acceleration, if you're looking at the four different domains that, that you're assessing within the eye-ready diagnostic, there might be two areas in which a student really is excelling. And great, let's find ways to challenge and push and enrich and deepen that understanding. But there might be an area or two that they actually still need some grade level work. And let's make sure they're getting that too, so that as their skills continue to build, there are no gaping holes that we're able to fill as we go.
Yeah, and I think I'll just add to like, you know, the, of the four domains that are measured in really all of these assessments just differently. They have numbers and operations, algebraic thinking, data placement and geometry placement. And when we think about those categories, what we noticed, Chris and I, when we were originally looking at the winter data, is that for some of the students, even if they scored really highly on the Iowa, would score lower in number and operations. Well, that's something we have to rectify before we can do any sort of acceleration, because that's going to be a significant gap for them as they increase in grade level. So we want to make sure that we cover those skills so that they can be successful. So I say that just to say that I think that, um, the Iowa tells us one piece of the story, but we didn't before have the criterion reference piece to look at as a part of that and to make really true instructional decisions. And Iowa isn't going to give us instructional decision-making process. The eye-ready will help support that in getting us there. So as I walk through classrooms and as our eye-ready partners walk through classrooms, the excitement that they have around that and the excitement that we see kids having. Um, Megan Isaacson was talking to kids when we were at, uh, their school, just for our recent visits. And the excitement with which kids were talking about math was more than I had ever seen before. So it was just really encouraging to see that. And, um, I, I think in the long term, we're going to be able to better support kids. But I think that in the short term, obviously, we're still working through seeing this data and its alignment, because it is a new tool. So we've had two diagnostic periods, as I reminded, that's not a lot of time to make, um, full-blown decisions on, but I think we're aligning it to really see where are the gaps in the Iowa, um, in terms of instruction.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you for taking onto questions. Any other discussion from the board?
Uh, yeah, it's like one brief comment. So I think maybe in last year, we were looking at math pathways. Um, and it had a diagram for this compacted math course and being offered to seventh graders. And one of the questions from community members, myself as well, was, well, should this be offered to the most accelerated sixth graders who have demonstrated the greatest aptitude for math? And the response to that meeting was, well, those students already on track were taking calculus by senior year. The requirements under state law, as well as our mission, as well as I just think philosophically, should be meeting students where they are at and not any predetermined pathway. And for me, maybe that was a misstatement, but I'm looping back to a conversation we just had earlier and sort of a lack of pathways for acceleration on math seemed demonstrative, or at least, you know, reflective of this idea that, you know, like there's a ceiling implicitly, perhaps, of calc, of calculus.
It's changed, like I, I just wanted to.
I'm glad it's changed, but like that mindset, I can't square with what it is to provide an appropriate education.
It was a, it was a miss, it was a, a miss, misrepresented, somebody misspoke, it was a misspeak. Um, in that presentation, if you look at the math pathways website now, you'll see that Erin Miller, the principal of the high school, um, said, hey, I think we're really, what did I say, high school? He put, he put a new video, we, we put a new video link on there that clarifies that specifically for students who are identified. Um, they're currently enrolled, like all students who are enrolled in code thirty-three classrooms in fifth grade for High Cap services are automatically matriculating into the compacted two, three class as sixth graders. So if that was, uh, it was misrepresented last year or it wasn't covered in depth, because.
I mean, it was on the diagram.
Great. I mean, I, I'm sorry it was there, but I'm saying it, it has since been rectified and it's now, it's now the pathway. That was the intention.
I have one closing comment, just, I asked for this last year, I'm going to keep asking for it as long as I'm, I'm on the board. And I think these programs need names that human people can remember. Because even in this discussion here, we tried to be like, wait, which is the code thirty-two? Like you just need a name, and I know it's kind of charged, like what name you would put it on, but whether it's like in classroom versus special classroom versus, you know, enrichment in high school or whatever, just at some point, I would love to get names for these programs. And I know, I get that the code name is set by the state, but it could be like code thirty-two and in parentheses, you know, like the green trees or whatever.
Just qualify for us till we can test. Let's, let's, let's.
Can I just, I just want to thank you for this information. I think that, um, I'm thrilled that, uh, with the, where the committee came out in terms of adding the creativity. Um, I would love to, uh, if there's some way to kind of measure whether or not teachers are actually seeing that, um, and then using it and allowing those kids, whether it's an artistic ability or whatever it is, or they think about things differently. And I don't know, I'm not one of those kids, but, um, if the teachers are, since they're, obviously they're not going to get pulled out for that, but if they're using that in their classroom and, and assisting those kids in reaching their highest potential.
So remind me again, how much money are we getting from this?
Hundred and thirty-six thousand, it's actually a hundred and thirty-five nine something.
Okay, thanks. So, uh, at this moment, I'll take a motion to, for approval of the High Cap program plan high grant application.
The move that we approved the, um, the.
It's my earlier.
Second.
The board approval is for the plan, not for the grant, according to WAC. So like, we can re-characterize it, but like the legal requirement is whether you approve the plan, not the grant.
Okay.
Okay.
I second.
Seconded. Um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against?
Nay.
Okay, that's, uh, approved four to one. So Matt was the MacGuffin of this. Um, yeah, thank, thank you all. Uh, thank you for your time on this. Uh, yeah, Matt, I, I, I think it's no, it is no coincidence. STEM, uh, it is no coincidence. So we definitely need to look at something for long these slides, but thank you for, for this. Uh, appreciate all the work you've done and I appreciate, uh, you know, I, I think as, as Brett said, it's, it's nice to be able to have tough conversations in the boardroom, nothing personal intended. Uh, all, all about doing the best for our kids and our students. Uh, especially as we, we have very high expectations these days and our kids are, are in a very different world. Uh, and I know you're carrying about three sixty degrees of them, even though we're talking about, you know, less than eight of a degree right now, but I, we appreciate it. So thank you very much. And keeping the episode rolling.
The more man.
The whole lot more than that.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think there, but you know, there's huge deep dives in the high school math curriculum this year. So I think we just need to be patient, let the, I, I agree that there's significant issues, but let's let, they're, they're doing the work. Let's, let's hear what the, our experts have, have decided.
Let's move on to, uh, thank you, David. Sorry, let's move on to, I do, to the budgeting and financial planning.
Let's do two A, and then we'll put the budget stuff all together. No, that's the one we kept close to.
Oh, okay. Sure, thank you. Two A. Communications on the board.
So we kind of had a three-part approach to this. One was to talk to you conceptually around what a change in the public records, um, uh, policy would entail. Tonight then is a first reading of really what the language would look like. Then give community time, if you are still wanting to move forward, to provide any input. And then it would be part of your next board meeting, if you're going to adopt anything, um, from there. So I'll turn it over to Director Battersby.
Um, yes, so this is just bring forth policy forty forty, and it's associated procedure, which is public records, which we discussed somewhat in depth. The changes last week in sort of our last four, which was two weeks ago, um, in a table format that largely, if you look at the procedure markup. Oh, is there a word? Uh.
Pull it up right now.
No worries. Just discussing the changes in fees to expand to include scan documents. And the transfer document in gigabytes, uh, based on a GIP basis, etc. We also went through, as has been practiced, and created hyperlinks to the various, um, RCWs and what have you, and updated a reference. And RCW forty-two dot fifty-six dot oh seven oh, it said nine, it should have been a me, we just caught an error there. Um, and that's really all that was done. So it's just analogous to what was shared last week, but in a more lengthy format. You will see there is a reference to two dollars, so we could, and then it represents that we could choose to waive it for things like, if there's a flat fee alternative there, um, at the bottom, which I think was brought up by a director during our conversation. And that we could waive fees for things like he is asking for direction information, etc. So there's a nominal fee which we could choose to just waive as a board.
And these are for public records, not student records.
Right, and there is a change to the policy itself to clarify that the records referenced for student information are not regularly maintained as part of the students' educational records are not considered approved, student records that are public records, which is policy applies. So it just clarifies that things are regularly maintained in student records, that falls into the per buck. So that that's not anything that anyone would have to pay a fee for. Um, so if you want to say ask your state kids, Q, that doesn't fall under this policy, and access to fee would not apply for that.
Good, thank you. Any concerns from the board? Should we put this on the consent agenda for next time?
Right.
Are you okay? Aaron, is that fine?
Good job.
Yeah, thank you very much. Okay. Now we can, uh, thank you very much, Aaron. Uh, move on to, uh, to the financial plan.
Oh, man. Right, financial education. Uh, provided to you is the budget status report through November and the budget status report through December. Also, obviously, our new and beloved monthly board financial report, or dashboard, if you will. Um, looking at this, we are thirty-three point three percent through the fiscal year, like I said, through the month of December. Looking at our expenditures, we're at three one point eight percent, so we're tracking below, which is excellent for our expenditures. And month to annual budget, about seven point nine percent. Of course, I provide to you the five-year average underneath, we can kind of take a look at how it tracks that way also. That's a seven point six percent, so if you're justifying, no worries there. On the revenue side, we're at three one point one percent, at thirty-three percent of the year. So we're doing well, as you all know, a large chunk of our local tax is coming in October and April, and that brings us up a little bit. So revenues are just what they need to be, or at seven point one percent among the actual annual budget. And of course, the five-year average is six point nine percent. So everything is tracking exactly where I think it should be at this point. Uh, no concerns. In regard to fund balance, the widget down the bottom left, about eight hundred, eight, eight hundred twenty-two thousand or one point one five percent. And so with that, any questions at this point? Have we paid off the interfund loan at this point? We have not. Um, A, at this point, Director Adams is doing a deep, deep dive. We just want to make sure we're doing this and getting this right. Um, we should have a, within the next week or so, the first million there. And then with another sixty days or so, we'll have the second million, and then we'll show up on that budget, that capital fund low repayment, along with the interest. Thank you for asking, and we did deep dive on January nineteenth, the study session, but we are doing it, just for me, for Director Adams, we want to make sure all the keys are crossed and eyes are dotted on that.
I saw some chatter after the budget one-on-one that I thought was fantastic, by the way. Um, with that question about putting their fund loan in, um, I don't know if it's worth doing a very just short summary or, um, FAQ on the website somewhere and, um, of an explanation that, you know, I mean, just cash flow and like why it happened briefly. And then the plan to, um, what you just told us, that next week, first half and then sixty days, um, is the intention.
That'd be really helpful, I think, because that, that's a question I've heard also.
Yeah.
And we will be there, there's no doubt.
Yeah.
It's for us, you know, there is a simple question, the electronic button, pay it first day to a million. But on the accounting side, the audit side, we make sure that every single dollar is accounted for. And why are we covering this with cap tech dollars, etc.? So we're just being very vigilant on this.
Right, I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't know, maybe there's full understanding of exactly what it is. A loan sounds scary, but it's less scary when it's from us, right?
Cut that section out.
Right.
Put some information.
Yeah.
Any, anything else? That's it. Oh, okay. Thank you very much. Um, I think that, that all looks good. I, I think the, the question was whether we wanted to put anything on the website for the benefit of the community.
Just about that, just about the loan, that's what I thought the most questions about after the subject one-on-one.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, you mean online, whatever.
Yeah, after that, that there was a question about that.
Yeah, the FAQ was up there, that's a good idea. Yeah. Okay, let's, uh, move on to, uh, three A, board policy. Okay, let's uh move on to uh three A board policy eighteen hundred oh six budget and financial planning and level one monitoring. Uh do you have any discussion around this?
I think the only thing to bring to the attention and and Director Sullivan, I'll really let you kind of speak to it is. It's a similar conversation to the OE seven, and it's really section three or part three of this. Um and there's a citation to OE seven, because this really has to do with the uh requirements around bond rating, so. Director Sullivan, correct, OE six budgeting, financial planning, financial planning for any fiscal year shall support board policy, protect the district financial jeopardy derived from a multi-year plan. Everything in our opinion is in compliance, aside from this superintendent run, who mentioned. Number three maintains adequate ledger reserves to meet the financial requirements of bond rating agencies consistent with board policy. Obviously, we had the discussion around our downgrading of the moody's from triple A to double A one. Hence, we have to check the box nine compliance, the rest of OE six, we deem to be in compliance, but want to bring that to your attention.
Question about that, and I know this predates you, I think your first day was like September third or fourth. So going to 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 six, it says it's presented to the board with adequate adequate time for review and approval before September first. Um so like that's looking backwards, I mean, the 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 books weren't finalized, like, I mean, we were, we approved the budget. Um with inadequate information, I mean, so I would thoughts, because going through them, it seems that we were not in compliance for six.
For all um for all six um components, or is there a?
Number six, like the the.
Oh, number six, sorry, it's OE six, so.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
All sorts, yeah, but because it uses the past tense, I think we're talking about the financial data.
And certainly I felt, and you know, there's many mentions of it, like during board meetings, that we did not have. Like all the data available, um so like I I think it should be a non-compliance.
That's fair.
And so I would, because it's more, it looks like formal discussion.
Um I think, yeah, and yeah, our recommendation on that is based on all the information that in this predates Director Sullivan, so what I had from July one until board, I tried to get you as much of the information. I take no offense to what you want to see, we want to be better too, you know, you've seen our plans.
I appreciate it, I think that's fair, and.
So would you like to pose that as a motion?
Yeah, I I move that for item six on OE six budgeting, uh financial planning, level one review. Uh that it be marked as not in compliance um. For 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 the board, and I I'm not sure, like, there's, I would, if you can, if if you want to amend it, you know, and all, you you know, or. If I can move for you to define that's not in compliance as well, I mean, like, so it shows that we're in agreement there, so I think we all are, right?
I I'm not. In agreement with that, I think if you read the way it is, that it's um. Do we have a second?
Do we have a second?
My second.
Okay.
Um. Interest of the board is that they be adequately informed in a timely manner that allows them to fully understand the priorities built into the budget prior to the public hearing and board adoption dates. I don't think there could have been more transparency. Um I I understand there's been changes since then, but that's not what we're monitoring, we're monitoring the information that we had at the time. The whether or not the superintendent used the board priorities and built them into the budget, and I think that's the case.
Oh. Yeah, the only the only problem is we've got a September first date on there.
But we did approve it.
That we didn't.
We had people, we had a new employee who hadn't started yet, so our superintendent charged other employees to take responsibility for the budget, they provided us the information to the best of their abilities. There wasn't anything we could have acted on, and we approved it before then, so if we weren't. Right, if we weren't comfortable approving it with the information, I think that's a bigger issue for our board's behavior rather than the budget, I mean, why why did you vote to approve the budget if you didn't think you had enough information?
Oh, yeah, because we knew that a new team was coming on, I mean, that notice would be, a new team was coming on board at the extension was going.
We approved the budget.
I mean.
I mean, I would think that we had enough information to do that, and we probably shouldn't have done it.
Well, no, I asked questions a lot about like, what would happen if we did not approve the budget, understanding that our finances were up in the air. To say that it's now the board's fault for approving a budget because.
I'm not.
Administration was not in a position to provide adequate information, which I get.
It's the superintendent's fault that we had an employee leave and the employee that was chosen to come in to fill in started five days after what this date says. He charged other people to bring the information to us, to present the budget to us, we had a public hearing, like, it just had. I I don't understand what the issue is, are you concerned that they presented inaccurate information?
Well, they did, I mean, like, they indolently said, like, that the fund balance, like, w- w- was a guess. When we approved, we.
So each year, you know, the closing out process will always be a guess, because even with Matt and even rolling up approving um a budget earlier in June, it's still going to be a yes, because we closed out August thirty first. And then we have to rectify the book, so the best we can get it to you is probably the first meeting in October. Of exactly what it's going to be, I would agree that we didn't, we we will have a sharper um ability to predict it in the future, to your point, Director Lurie, you did approve a budget on time. The budget was approved by the E S D, O S B I did accept that budget. And while the numbers were um more challenging this year. We didn't do any, you didn't approve anything that was illegal or that couldn't be moved forward, are there things in our process that are going to be better? We will, we will have more stability, absolutely, but um you know, I I think it's it's both. Side to this, you did meet all of the obligations with the September deadline.
So I don't think that the fact that we approve a budget means, because every time we approve a budget, that means that we can never put this in some non-compliance. You know, so I don't think.
Well, we appropriately.
Yeah, but I don't, so I think those are two separate issue, I think these things are expectations of ourselves and for the superintendent. And I think that um we can make a note on the board comments in additional notes, but it is um you you didn't meet our expectation. And so if that and if staff feel like it's allow room for.
I'm sorry, did you say did or did not? It did not meet, apparently, like what Dan is saying, it did not meet kind of like the board's standing, is.
Yeah, and we'll vote, we'll we'll vote on, yeah, whether it is, um but I think it's it's a kind of what are our standards and expectation, it could could have been better, and maybe this is what we're voting for, and I it didn't meet the standard that we were expecting.
Yeah, I I I think we knew we had to get the budget out to O S P I, I think we knew where the uncertainty was. And uh we knew that uh, yeah, we knew where the uncertainty was. And we knew that it was a budget to the best of our knowledge at the time.
I mean, so I think one of the deadlines, and Matt, you know it better than me, it was July tenth or something, where like we have, you know, where the district was supposed to submit.
E S D.
What?
To the E S.
Yeah, to the E S C, like, we missed that deadline. So like, I mean, the fact that, like, we're even having a conversation that we missed deadlines, that we were required under state law, you know, to to.
We submitted it, what I would say is, it was a skeleton. And it was. What it was, so it it went, but it wasn't maybe as fully baked, because we're in the midst of trying to find a new CFO and other factors that were related to that. So we did make it, the E S D got our information, it just was a very, it was an outline at best.
And then I think there's also like deadlines for when we were supposed to post like our proposed budget, or make available to the public that we missed. You mean ahead of the, I mean, like in the timeline, like, there's like various timelines, there's like a July timeline, there's an August timeline. I think the August is like the posting of the budget, like, I think we were pretty late on that, like, I don't know, like, how we were later and and.
If if here's, here's what I would say, that statement that says prior to the public hearing, did you have all the information that you needed to be able to make that prior to the public hearing? That would probably be the part of where that may or may not have been to your satisfaction as a board.
Was the public hearing the first meeting in August?
The second.
Yeah, it's the second.
So to whether, to the degree to which we had provided you the information that you felt you needed prior to that meeting, that's probably where you could have the most. That's the most, that's the greatest area, in my opinion, on this.
I think we could uh say that we did the best with the information that we had, but it still didn't meet our compliance of what we expect from ourselves. Right, but it's not like a fault or whatever, it is like a process improvement.
I I so so just as we've come up with this issue before, when there've been things where um like our new superintendent was being rated. Actually, it was on the performance of the pre- previous superintendent, right, so it's a little bit the same, because like our previous, you know, finance director kind of left us not able to scramble and get certain things done in the time that we normally would have done them, so. Um from my point of view, it's like either either we check non-compliance, but we write a note saying they were very extenuating circumstances. The board understood in advance that because of the transfer of, you know, the transfer to a new, you know, executive finance director, like, there would be some delays and that that the district was acting in defeat to get us the information as soon as as soon as possible, you know, and as much detail as possible. Or mark in compliance, and we still write that note, and either way, I think this discussion leaves everybody fully aware of, like, yes, what the what the issue is and what's really being rated here, so like.
Michelle, is there? Where is, where do we find the section that says with noted exceptions?
Isn't that?
No, it's it's not within each.
So this one.
But then the comments are within.
So uh we have a motion on the table to find us not in compliance with number six, we've got a second. Uh and then we've also got Maggie's proposal as part of the discussion.
Maggie, can I, can I suggest that that is an amendment that, well, I don't want to just, let's just vote first on whether we're going to say compliance or not compliance, and then we can decide if we're going to know?
Yes, okay, so uh are we, so this is the motion for us being not in compliance by September first. All in favor, say aye.
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 Against?
Nay.
Nay.
So, okay, so that is uh two to three. Um for against that motion.
But I support an explanation.
So now let's move to, so now the the side is. I could have a motion for number six to find us in compliance.
The motion is, I know, I'm thinking, the motion is to um find the the finds the, is it the superintendent?
Superintendent, this is.
Superintendent in compliance with uh just in compliance with with.
With number six.
Number six.
With the comments, the note, and.
With a note saying, saying, I don't know, just something else. For the discussion we just had, the note saying, saying, you know, um like the board recognizes that that there that that there were some delays resulting from a transition to a new executive finance director, um like, which we hope will be happening.
The board recognizes there were delays.
That there were.
In providing a complete budget due to the transition of.
A complete budget by September first, due to the transition to a new CFO.
Yeah, and we all agree that three is not in compliance, yes.
Right.
You do, we just need to make sure that we're.
Well, we're just voting on six right now.
We're just.
And I second that.
All in favor of finding the superintendent in compliance with the noted exception, say aye.
Aye.
Against?
Nay.
So that causes four to one.
It wasn't really with noted exception, it was with explanation, because noted. Because if you look at the top.
With the explanation.
With explanation, because if assuming we vote non-compliance with number three, we that would be with noted exceptions, because, right.
So in number, let's go go to number three. So we maintain adequate financial reserves, not in compliance, do I have a motion for the board's uh rating on that?
I move we find the superintendent not in compliance of number three.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Against? So that is five zero uh finding not in compliance. So in terms of board comments, I uh I move, we put the same board comment as we did last time, which was uh I believe the CFO has provided the board with information around this uh in non-compliance. And the board had previously approved the non-compliance.
And we could even put in something about how, and the board is satisfied with plan.
And the board is satisfied with the plan.
To correct.
To correct the non-compliance.
So similar language to moment seven.
Yes, yes, yes.
I think we did this last year too.
Yeah. Okay, so could I have a motion with the comment as previously provided? You can just say motion is for common comment is previously.
I move I move that we that we.
Have previously provided.
Have to previously provide a comment.
Second, okay, um any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against?
Stay.
Okay, so that is four yes, zero nay, one abstain.
I move that we find the superintendent in compliance with um one, two, four, and five.
Do I have a second? All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Against? Okay, so all the rest are in compliance with that five zero vote. And then the final determination of the board, do I have a motion, I assume, for in compliance with noted exceptions?
The move. Seconded.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Say aye, aye, against? Abstain? Okay, so.
I I know I passed up, I just want to thank um the finance team, the finance team, I think the level of transparency um that that, you know, this has been a big struggle and a big source of concern for both you, us, and the community, and the level of information and explanation, I think, is serving us very, very well.
Yeah, thank you very much for the work, and I and also thank you to the previous team as well, Aaron, uh you're the representative right now.
Yeah.
So, you know, thank I uh thank you for working under uh, I think that's under fire, we need a mantle of valor for that. So I, we are speaking here.
It was a, it was a huge, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and I and I concur in that, like, I, this is not a reflection, I mean, it was enormous, like stepping in.
It it wasn't enormous, so you you and you can see the concern around the the ratings on this for that reason, there this was, this was a tricky situation to be in, uh so thank you very much. And it it does look great moving forward, so most appreciated.
God, he's doing. You don't want me to tell that.
Okay, let's move forward, uh keep keep this ball rolling, I think, math class continues. Board calls the eighteen hundred oh eight asset protection.
Great, so um this is one that uh Director Sullivan and I talked a little bit about, um that he looked through. Um very different criteria here, this has to do more with not just finances, but all operations, so, Director Sullivan. Um it is OE eight asset protection, superintendent take reasonable matters to protect, maintain, use, and safeguard assets really around uh insurance, to be frank, across the board, and items one through ten, by Frank. On this, uh we deem to be in full compliance. Obviously, we have our insurance or the risk pool, the Washington schools just man and cool and myself, the executives, batteries, we manage that.
Yeah.
And use symbiotic.
Um could I have a motion, we can do this all at once, I suspect, could I have a motion to find all these items in compliance?
So move.
Second, by Maggie Ty, uh all in favor? Aye. Against? So that's a five zero to find in compliance, thank you very much, um could I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda as published.
Second. Second. Second, second by Dan, all in favor? Aye, against? Okay, that's five zero for the consent.
Um, superintendent announcements, just one uh today, and that is as we wrap up. Uh, school board recognition appreciation month, uh, we are uh honoring. Director Lurie for five years of service on the school. So, here you are, five years of great service. So, um, I'll have lots of information, legislative updates and whatnot in my board report to you this week, uh, but. I will yield the floor to you all.
Okay, thank you, congratulations, uh, let's move to board announcements, legislative rep report.
Um, I will make it quick because, um, it wasn't a time, so the largest, the first bomb, I head to DC on Saturday. I'm super excited at this opportunity, um, the priorities for advocacy are special education funding. And school meals are really kind of the primary, there's been some talk about parent rights legislation, but I don't think we have too much to worry about. With our representatives, um, on that, so I don't think we have to really dive into that. Um, with regards to, um, what's happening in the next week or so. Um, nothing really applies to us so much, so it wasn't something that I think. Um, there, there's a librarian bill that I don't think really, um, affects us, mandatory recess, we do more than thirty minutes. Right, thirty five, one thirty five minutes, that doesn't apply to us. Librarian, there, um, there's a bill, it's an unfunded ma- unfunded mandate to require library programs. Uh, in every school, um, they didn't. Put any funding in it, obviously, we have that, so it's not, uh, I mean, I think it's important for all kids to have access to a library, but they have to fund it. I mean, that's, so it's, so it's, I think it's, I think it's in, I think it's opposed because, or maybe it's another because of the funding issue. Um, the prejudgment interest that we've been talking about looks like, or they're voting on it today with an amendment to exclude public entities. So that's already been voted on, I don't know the result, but it went through last year, so they were pretty optimistic that 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 would be a benefit to us. Um, transportation costs, there's companion bills, um. In the House and Senate that it still looks positive, it's a special education and that bills and transportation bills are. Moving forward in a positive way so far, um, school meals, I honestly can't remember what they said about that. Next week, there's going to be hearings on isolation and restraint, um, it, it defines isolation and restraint. Um, and then it has prohibitions and restrictions, I didn't take a deep look to see, um, Wasta isn't taking a position on it. Um, I don't know, that's a huge, I mean, it's how filled five, 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 nine, if anyone wants to look at it.
It's a, it's a tough one, um. I'm not surprised Wazza didn't take a position on it, um, because it feels like it's putting, it it puts us into a position to say. Yeah, we think we should restrain students, and that is not what, I can't imagine any of the two hundred ninety five school districts in the state. Um, that anyone enjoys that, but what it's looking at is completely eliminating the ability to go hands on with a student. In any situation, you know, I do want a situation today, um, those things happen, we have students who are in out of district placements. Um, we follow every, every single, um, law requirement about the safest way possible. It's all about student safety, and there are some limitations that they're looking on, and that Director movie is concerned about. How strict this is going to get, and what does that really allow us to do to make sure we keep it safe, so there's some challenges.
The reason that uh, Wazza doesn't take a position is it doesn't really fit into any of the legislative positions, so. You can couch it under safety, so that's why it's. That's, they're, they're just kind of steering clear, the legislative committee might make a different decision, but, um, but that's really the main reason is. It just doesn't support a legislative position, um, I think that's.
Nothing on regionalization.
Nothing on regionalization, I can't imagine that's a full amount I'm hearing.
There's someone in Bellingham that at all tried to track some stuff down for you, there, there's someone in Bellingham who is starting to. Put some language together as well, I heard, so in a direction, um, I, in in a positive direction. Or or districts like ours, but not enough, I mean, it's not in, I don't think it's taken.
They're not eighteen percent.
I think they're twelve percent. But not.
Uh, legislator member who's putting something together?
Yeah, I can hear it that up in Bellingham, there's. But not in a way that would necessarily, I'm going to still track some things down, we have our alliance meeting coming up, so I'll make people.
And Logan and Tim are both going to be at the conference, so I will.
And the other, the other one, though, that coming out of Bellingham is on the, um, on the levy funding. And that is a definite positive, but not taking enough, I I would hope there's going to be a little more, but at least they're starting to push forward on that.
Right, and then there was talk of potentially there being parent and student rights bills coming forward, but there hasn't. No one's seen anything yet, so those are parent and student, parents' rights, I mean, it's a lot of the. We don't hear a lot about it here, but a lot of the parents wanting more say in the curriculum choices and things like that. And then students' rights, I don't really know what they have in mind for that, but we haven't seen anything yet, they're just expecting that we might, um, so. So far, things are, they're busy, they're saying that, um, I didn't write down the number. It was something, yeah, there's just a lot. Going on.
Focus on schools and we'll be.
Which is good, right?
Thank you, thank you for the update, any announcements? I think, uh.
I have a question about Smith, sorry.
Oh, I just wanted to, oh, part of the advocacy is going to fail to meet with our members of Congress, and so I'm going to meet with Congresswoman Schreier. Even though Smith is our, I have, I have a relationship with her, and so, um, I I think she'll be stronger advocate for education. She's a pediatrician, and then also that Senator Cantwell, that's great.
Oh, no, I just wanted to ask, actually, do we, are we closer, uh, this is a question for credit really, are we any closer to having, um. Candidate information sessions scheduled?
That is on our agenda for next week, we still plan those, we will definitely do two, as we have done in the past, and. Depending on how you want to do it, definitely, people are watching, we tended to hook one up to a board meeting, like a session, and then do one standalone a lot, yeah.
And one kind of daytime and one evening.
And they'll be recorded as well. And speaking of recording, we had a discussion about study sessions being recorded.
Yeah.
Are we, are we good with study sessions being recorded, thoughts around that? So, okay.
I don't think, yeah, I mean, I, I, the only thing that I hesitate in is making sure that it's, um, a safe space for learning. Um, but, but I think the ability to view far outweighs that, so.
One, one thing we need to think about is what if we're doing like a training in a study session, like, do we record that?
But what kind?
I don't know, like that, that guy who came and trained us about related to, um.
Oh, policy.
Policy governance, like, it's some, just because some people's trainings are like. Proprietary or whatever, like, I don't know, like, we can ask them, yeah.
There's also been times where we were learning, the first time we did the facility planning, um, we had. Different groups come in and talk about it, so that would be an exception to it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that sounds great, I think we've got consensus around generally doing it, except when there are noted exceptions for other reasons. Proprietary content, that type of thing.
Yeah.
Okay, and with that, I think we are done, um, so, so, yes. Got a motion to adjourn, Eric.
Sorry, can I ask a little quick question first, we used to have the rule that we couldn't go past ten, but that was when our meeting started at six, do we now have the rule that we can't go past nine? If our meeting started at five, or did it was the ten?
It goes to a seven.
Cut off like the district thing, or was it like a five hour?
Well.
I don't know, let, let, let's try and not have to make that decision.
Yes, okay, let's try.
So let's, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn, so move, a second. Thank you, let's bring this episode to a close, all in favor? That five zero, to adjourn, thank you much, thank you to the audience, and thank you to staff for, uh, hanging on with us here.